Right?
Go ahead.
I'm just waiting for those new books they promised us by the.
I'll order.
Do we have any idea how much longer that's gonna make that noise?
Who's printing?
Uh, Maureen is.
We have to look that up as a statute, like the ninety-one A that big, don't they have to pay by the page?
That's like almost a remote paper.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
What's she printing?
Stuff for the plan board.
Yeah, this is this, but.
I guess someone did a ninety-one.
Okay. Ninety-one A.
I just remember there used to be a statue.
How long before are you printing both?
God only knows.
Can you put a pause on it?
Can we pause it?
Well, no, I said almost on the move. Is it that loud?
It's all right, we'll just talk loud, I have that ability.
Are we charging by the page?
Well, I was gonna ask Caitlin that.
We are, right?
So if it's a ninety-one A from somebody, we can, it's public of who that ninety-one A request came from.
With Gardella's.
Who?
With Gardella's.
Okay. So she should pay.
Well, this is my third round of this, again, there used to be a statute. The other ones were not as thick, they're about this.
But we're charging, she already picked up her, uh, paper?
The first set.
We charge?
We did not.
Charge.
Shouldn't, wait, the law dictates how much.
Right, I think there's a law.
Well, yeah, whatever the law states.
Especially after a certain amount of pages.
It's like twenty-five cents.
I'm looking at you. No, no, no.
That's the antiquated one, I'm imagining.
Right.
So I don't know what.
So when this first came, this is week three, it was so big of a request that it was taking me three weeks to compile everything. And I've been delivering it in bits and pieces.
You're out of paper. So leave it like it is, leave it like it is.
All right.
Also part of this.
So this is week three, so I didn't add week one, week two she didn't pick up. Week one they came and picked up, and I, I have not said anything about charging. I had no idea it was gonna be this big.
So the law also in, in ninety-one A is very specific that eh, there is a level of unreasonableness with somebody's request. That is actually part of it. So some of it can be unattainable if it's like copies of minutes and stuff like that, it is without looking at the exact request.
It was all, the word was all. So this, this last bit is all the emails.
So you got all emails, so.
Like in a year's time or two?
Three years, three years worth of email.
All right, we'll charge, I mean, there should be a policy that we charge per copy.
Do you want me to just let that beep on?
Is it gonna mess anything up?
I don't think so.
No, it's just. But it's gonna beep like this. I mean, beep or finish it up.
I had no idea when I opened, when I got sent.
Just so you know, it was that.
I thought we had a policy or something.
Um, well, the policy that we've had is kinda outdated and it actually would exceed what the limit is for the law. Um, so pretty much it says, charge per communication cannot exceed one dollar. And that means attachments are also considered part of communication. So how I'm reading this is for copies, you can't charge over a dollar for.
Per copy?
Per copy.
Well, yeah, we're not gonna, yeah.
But our, the policy that was in place and put in place, uh, back in twenty twenty, if I'm correct, it says two dollars per copy, so we would not be able to use our policy on this, the law.
But we can still charge for three hundred pages.
So even if it was a dollar, I don't think like all of the stuff you had to go through. I think the printing would be better than that.
Yes, right.
Just my opinion, I don't know, but, um.
Well, at least you get fifty cents or something like that a copy or twenty-five cents.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, the, when the stuff we had to go through, you guys had to go through the abusments for on the Amina crap? Do we charge, did they charge per copy for that?
I think some of it, huh?
That I don't know.
I don't think Richard paid for.
No, but a lot of the stuff for that case, it was put in the spots for them for doing, which is allowable to do by law. And that's when they went to charge, I think the charge is when it's for their personal records.
Okay, okay, so yeah, charge twenty-five cents, twenty-five cents a copy.
A page?
So somebody just came in, I don't know if you've gotta go to the window.
There's no. All right, all right.
That was a question that wasn't a, do you have to go to the window?
I did it.
Oh, good, I'm not the only one.
There you, now you, now, you want me to kick it?
I have been enjoying.
Do we have a budget for new printer?
We have to print two hundred and twenty pages when we do the checklist.
Is that warranted? Cause I guarantee you.
I don't have to go all the H P over there, it's much cheaper, much more efficient over here.
This part right here, whenever you put paper, it's gonna, you gotta keep it separated and you gotta keep this one inside. Oh, we're right there. And now you just select what paper and print.
I select what?
Select, like your eight and a half by eleven and hit continue or start originally.
Oh, it says.
Okay, if, uh, Andrea come back. All right, we're gonna discuss the poll.
Yeah.
Voting Works?
I'm gonna, you know what, I'm just gonna move over here because that way I can see. First, if you don't, sorry if I start real fast.
Sure.
One, Jim, I would like to deeply apologize that I didn't, didn't include you in this conversation. It was a thought that, you know, it was fast thinking, so I do apologize for that. I do wanna start off with that, so.
Can I add to that, that the board didn't meet to discuss this? Also. So you weren't left out of a meeting, just, you know.
It was a conversation.
Uh, and after the fact conversation, be quite frank. So I mean, some, this, it was like last minute time.
Emergent feeling situation.
Yeah, basically, I was called, I was on the tractor up in the mountain and came in.
Yeah, I had thirty days, no.
So, but anyway, the decision, we still can order the books if we need to reorder them and stuff like that, but we need to have the discussions for.
Yeah.
Will the ETF pay for those, what do you call it again?
I called last, uh, week, uh, Michelle Clark.
Poll books, and will they pay for the poll books?
That's what I'm trying to tell you, they, the state has not responded yet, uh, either the D R A or charitable trusts. And usually when I call them on these things, they're like, well, you have to do a warrant change. Uh, as a single trustee.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, who did you respond to, who did you?
I called Michelle Clark, our representative at the D R A.
Okay.
And I also called charitable trust division at the D O J. And neither have gotten back to me.
And when was this?
I, last week. And I recalled Michelle Clark and left another message with her. She has in the past, yes, this is in her wheelhouse, but they don't really deal with those little stuffs a year and prefer it to be changed in a walk.
Did you have a meeting with your other two trustees to discuss this?
About this particular thing, no, this is.
So this is all your decision?
This has become boop de de boop. Well, my, uh, it was our decision that we contact the D R A.
You said you didn't, wait a minute, wait a minute.
The trustees.
You said you didn't have a meeting, but now you, the trustees didn't have a meeting?
Uh, about this particular issue, no, because this all just came up quickly.
I'm really confused now.
Yeah, 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 why?
Okay, wait a minute, so you're saying, you're saying the trustees didn't have a meeting, so Karen and Elaine have not been involved with this discussion?
They are aware of it.
Have they been involved with the discussion?
Involved with the discussion. She said when it, originally at a selectmen's meeting, I believe it was brought up about the voting machine and getting a machine this year. At our next meeting after that, Karen brought up, gee, is our purpose really written for that, this and that, the other thing, very.
For voting machines?
And poll books. So that's when I said, well, I will contact the D R A and see what their point of view is. We have not heard back from them, so the trustees are just in love on that, so we hear back from them. Uh, as far as trustees are concerned, uh, as a, as a unit.
Okay.
So.
I, I think Jim has a question and a point, so go ahead, Jim.
Uh, sorry, Leo. That's all right, I'm pleased, go ahead.
I, I'm just wondering the scope of this piece of discussion. It's my, my understanding, there's several components that. One is confusion about whether the state will pay for the poll books in any way, they won't.
No, 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 no.
All right, so I was just confused.
No.
Still an open question.
No, that comes out of ETF fund for the poll books.
So the rest of it then really comes down to when we set up the trust fund, right?
Mm-hmm.
What the.
Intent.
Intent.
The language.
The language, what do they mean by a voting machine?
Correct.
Okay, now, I would say, and of course, I'm not an attorney. I have never played one on TV.
Anybody can play an attorney.
But when we're looking at a system such as what Voting Works has, the ballot counting machine is what we would all probably recognize as what were voting machines previously from Comedian or any of these other companies. At the same time, the poll books are part of the voting process, okay?
I agree.
And in fact, I would say, because we're dealing with a single vendor in terms of the ballot counting machine and the poll books, and that everything works together as a system, that I would say the whole system should be considered.
Voting machines.
Voting machine system in the spirit of what people might have originally thought when they put this trust fund together. At that time, poll books were their problem, didn't exist.
Two thousand thirteen is, is the language, was from two thousand thirteen, so.
Yes, probably years old.
Yeah, so that was.
And we did, uh, at the onset of this, before we even set up for the conversation, when, and we went and had the demo, we had the conversation with you all.
Yeah, that's where.
That it's a voting machine, it's still a voting machine.
Right, that, the voting machine itself is.
No, no, the poll books are a voting machine.
Yeah.
And they met the criteria, we had that conversation months ago. That's why we were all underneath the same impression that we had the green light, it's a voting machine.
Part of the voting process.
Part, right, which, uh, I can't speak to all three of us, but I believe all three of us agree that the language, and you guys are the agents to expend. So, you know, if that's your interpretation of that, it's same thing, we'd like, you know, a, a note saying your interpretation isn't. I wish I would get.
We have it on YouTube right here.
Huh?
We have it right here.
Oh, right there. I don't, I, I don't see it as an issue or a problem going forward, but we just always like to double check with the D R A. We always like to hear from them to the trustees when it's outside the original purpose.
Okay.
I mean, our, I didn't bring them, but our rules of the road from the state say we had, you know, if it's outside that purpose, you know, that's just a little flag.
Do we have a copy of that, uh, ETF statement?
I have one right here, we take extra copies?
Uh, just let me, can you read it off?
So, all right, so in two thousand thirteen was the date of creation, name is the Voting Machine Expendable Trust Fund, Agents to Expend, B O S. And the purpose is purchasing a state-approved election voting machine.
Machine, you know, put in system. And it was very bland, it was very straightforward, but you know.
So one could.
Two thousand twenty-five, the language should be system, I think.
One could argue that, that, that the ballot counting machine.
Is all of it, yeah.
Doesn't even meet the criteria for that, because that says voting machine.
All their invoices, I was told, say voting.
So I mean, if people wanna split hairs about whether or not a, 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 the, the, all of the software and all of the items to go along with it doesn't meet the criteria, well, the ballot counting machine doesn't either, cause that says voting machine, it's not a voting machine.
But so does the invoice, uh, Caitlin, didn't you tell me the invoices say voting machine?
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I asked.
I would say it's ballot counter.
Oh, is it, I, so I, I asked.
Andrea, do you have a question, I saw your hand raised.
Well, another reason that we.
Okay, but I don't.
Hold on.
Another issue that had come up, cause again, this all came up as I was trying to prepare for budget. We weren't aware of some of the programming and maintenance fees being for every election, for, you know, two for the town election, so there were, I guess, extra fees that we weren't really aware of. Um, and then in conversation with Caitlin, there was, I think, when I was looking at the poll book, I thought it was gonna make our life a lot easier, expedite the check-in and checkout process, eliminate having people, you know, to have to be available to check in and check out. And again, in conversation with Caitlin, she informed me, you know, when she was in Dover, they opted not to use these. And we looked a little bit into it and it found out that they actually make it, so it's more work. The poll books add more work, you still have to have the, the check-in. Well, the papers, oh, yeah, you still have to have the check-in papers and, um, you know, what, compare them, Caitlin, like you have to, like, so.
If you don't mind me.
Yeah, no, please, cause you.
So, now obviously, they could have changed in two years or two and a half years, I've been in Dover a little while, but, um, when we looked at them pretty much how those E poll books work, is it's only your town data, it's not state data. So for the example I was using, you know, if Andrea or, you know, goes into the line, she can check in on that. But say if I were to move to Effingham from Wakefield and I go there, I can't check in on that poll book. So that means the person who's standing there has to send me yet again over to supervisor checklist so I can check in, fill out all my documentation. That would also go for those who, you know, may have moved from one road to another in Effingham, because they would still have to go through that process. So you'd be verifying technically on three different things, you have your electronic check-in, you'd have your paper check-in and your supervisors, and then you'd have to verify with your checkout as well. Um, like I said, I wasn't part, part of these demos, so I don't know if they've improved that much. But I know with Dover, when we had it, we opted out of it because of all the added, added steps to it.
Well, we didn't have a demo for the poll books.
All right, Jim.
Oh, I've got it here if you want. All right. Now, my memory is telling me that during this process, we've gone through several years where the state was revaluing voting machines, uh, and, you know, it, it took quite a while. And part of the process of certifying the different systems was that they were doing trial runs in certain towns, and I think Dover may have been one for Voting Works. And as part of the trial, before they gave full certification to the system, is that they required a parallel system. So that in case the thing didn't really meet the needs, you still had your paper record. Now, I don't know for sure that they've eliminated that, cause I, I was under the impression that was only during the trial period, but I may be wrong. I, you know, one of the big selling points on the, on the poll books is that you don't have the paper anymore. And, uh, you know, it, it sort of makes no sense unless you're like paranoid that, oh, you know, what if they break down? You know, or something like that. But I think we need to contact Voting Works and find out if that's true.
Maureen.
So, part of the budgeting process.
Louder.
Part of the budgeting process and, and part of just trying to organize the clerk's office, I've been doing a lot of reviewing on elections, and in fact, you still have to send a paper checklist to the state. Um, which would actually would wind up paying for a third check-in person.
So you gotta do a manual check, uh, send a manual checklist, not one that's off to.
Correct.
Poll books?
I'd have to do it within like twenty minutes of.
With all the lines, with all the lines through it and everything. I'm gonna correct it. It has to be within twenty minutes of when the poll book got the check-in. Um, so the, the manual person is allowed to be a little bit behind, so somehow that person is supposed to be checking what happened on the poll book and putting it on paper. So you're actually having the two poll books.
So you can't print, you can't print it off?
No.
So they gotta manually input all the information, even though we have it on the poll book?
Correct, right.
Yeah, check them in anyway, they can't change addresses or any of that stuff, it's not over.
Jim?
Well, I guess I don't, I don't know that.
It's in the purple book.
I'd love to see.
I'm reading, I'm reading the law right now.
The thing is, we just got like twenty pages of election law changes from the Secretary of State. I don't know if any of this is in there, and as we know, you know, somebody will go out, you know, to get donuts and they'll come back with a new law. You know, it's just ridiculous what they, what they do down there. But I have no knowledge.
I have been through the, I've been through the pages today, there wasn't anything new on poll books.
So what's the impact as far as duplicating the work? How much additional cost is gonna cost?
A third person.
A third person.
We'd have to add another person, um, and then of course.
Well, right now we have, how many people doing the check-in?
We normally have two at check-in and one at checkout.
And we have to add another person?
Correct, have to add another person.
But we don't have to do checkout anymore, that was my question.
We'd still have to do checkout.
We still have. By paper?
Correct.
And then on top of that, we have to have a fee to.
Right.
For the E books.
For each time, each.
For programming.
For the programming.
Yeah, each election.
How much is that?
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred for each poll book.
Per each election.
Per each election.
And I thought, and I, I, the, my memory, Jim, just you know, when I, cause I told them earlier in Rosemary, was I thought that was a one-time, I remember the discussion when they did the demo.
Yeah.
I thought it was a one-time programming fee, I didn't realize it was for every single election.
For the ballot counting?
For the poll books too.
But I don't know about that.
Yes.
They won't change it.
They verified it.
The checklist changes.
That it did.
The checklist changes, so every single time we have an election, so in a year like last year, we have five elections, that's two poll books at three hundred bucks a piece, so that's three thousand dollars, right?
Well, that's six hundred bucks plus twelve hundred bucks, so that's another eighteen hundred dollars we're gonna have to spend for E books plus the programming, cause four elections, uh, three elections, but.
Yeah, but then on a presidential, there's four.
Right.
Well, I'm talking next year, so it's eighteen hundred bucks, and right now, what does it cost us with just manual check-ins?
So for.
How much you pay?
If we were to stay with the two people checking in and one checking out, so it would be three people, we went up to fifteen dollars an hour, we figure like a twelve-hour day.
Five forty?
As a, well, um.
Per?
It's on that five to ninety.
Hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
Right, the difference.
So a hundred and eighty dollars.
Hundred and eighty per person.
Yes, correct.
So five forty.
I would say three.
Yeah. If you don't mind, may I add one thing too, cause I'm reading the law currently. Now, obviously, I, I don't know how much it's gonna work, but, um, I know in the purpose, it does specifically state state-approved. While looking at this, the state doesn't have a list of approved poll books, meaning we would have to get approval from the Secretary of State of New Hampshire for these poll books to make sure it stayed approved before.
So the ballot counter is a state-approved?
That's, that's state-approved.
But not.
But the poll book, I don't know if it already is, we'd probably have to call Secretary of State to confirm that, but.
That's probably why they're insisting that we have a manual check-in. Unless.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of questions that we may or may not have true answers for. I'd say if we have to have these redundancies in terms of still doing our manual system alongside with the poll book, that really makes no sense.
Well, that's kind of what.
What we decide, yeah.
Too, so.
Now, if it's incorrect, that we have to do the manual systems, then I think we're, we have a different equation in terms of, you know, this could be particularly the end-of-night processing where the team of Carol and Eric Jones, uh, can often spend hours.
If they don't matter.
Carrying the check-in and the checkout list, trying to find out, you know, what the discrepancy is. Now, we've had some elections where we've been fine, still takes some time to do it though. As opposed to a poll book, which would give you your totals instantly, and if you have correlation, then yay! But, you know, even if you don't have correlation, it gives you a clue as to where is the discrepancy? So you're not spending so much time searching for, oh, which, which name didn't come up on the checkout. Um, so there are theoretical savings of time and effort if that's the system you're using and not having to also use a, a manual system. So I think that's the key, the key question is, if we still have to do it manual anyways, then I don't see the value of that.
And the other issue would be for us from a budgetary standpoint, is we didn't budget for the purchase of these poll books, so if we can't, if the Secretary of State and the, um, charitable trust doesn't say that we meet the criteria and the intent of that article to take the money out of that ETF, that we don't have the money to, to, to make those purchases either, of thirty-five hundred bucks, right?
Well, almost four is thirty-nine.
Yeah, by the time you get them.
How many, uh, check-ins average in your elections, check-ins?
Two check-ins?
Well, I mean, how many people?
Um, I like, I have two.
Uh, for, you know, per election, just average.
Two, two check-ins.
Yeah, I know, but how many people?
How many people, how many people register, how many people check in?
Oh, well, for town election, two fifty-six is a good number, or three hundred. It's act, and they tell you when these machines, if you do any reading, they're like, a lot of people don't even use them for the town elections if you're a small town. They save them for the bigger, like the, you know.
Like the presidential election, you had eleven hundred and eighty, I think, right?
Right, and the general election is our main.
That was a real outlier though, but really, yeah, it was a lot.
You know.
So we got a lot of questions, I mean, can we just go forward with just the ballot counter for now and then try to get all these questions answered? We have till March, we can always.
Right.
Well, no, I mean, we have a contractual obligation. I mean, we told them to cancel right now, which was.
Only the poll books, right.
Only poll books.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I'm just saying that, you know, we need to have that conversation, get questions answered and say, you know, we're not a definitive no, cancel, cause we've already done that.
Right.
With that, that gentleman.
We can do that.
Already flat out told them no, cancel them, and it's like, hell, hold on a second.
Uh, I know, um, cause Jim was just talking about the law updates, so that law is in the updates for twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
But it's only to add words into it regarding, you know, just adding, you know, town business and deliberative sessions. So it does not change anything regarding also having a manual check-in. I just wanted to add that, so apologies, so.
May I just?
Go ahead.
I just going forward with your warrants for next year, it does make sense to create that trust to say voting system or something that will be.
We can update that, it's no problem.
Yeah, you know, just going forward.
Yeah, change the words, just wording.
Make it more encompassing, but.
After thirteen years, yes.
Yes.
Just with regards to the trust, um, can we put in the, um, programming fees?
That's one thing I would like to see happen.
Yeah, so you guys are in charge for the votings and stuff, so you can write up something.
Okay.
We can put a warrant article to change.
It would be a warrant change, is that how that?
It would, it's a warrant to change the wording of the ETF.
The forbage.
The purpose of, yeah, broadening it to encompass twenty twenty-five issues.
Every year you see a couple of them.
And we have to put the warrant articles in, not the.
Right, right, but they, you guys write it up.
Okay, and please forgive my ignorance, but, um, do we add to this fund every year?
Yes, well, we didn't last year.
Right.
Because we had enough money, but if it's, if it's a, gonna be a cost thing, then obviously.
And does that go into this wording of the change?
Yes, it goes into that trust fund.
Right.
But what, but do I, do I write into your warrant?
It'll be separate.
It would be separate, yeah.
So Maureen, I actually have one from last year that we can kind of just use and just do it to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But for the funds part, to put more funds into it, that has to be separate, it cannot be included in there.
It's a separate.
Funds are separate.
So verbiage is separate to the, to the money.
Yeah, that's what I needed to know.
So if you get the verbiage.
Yeah.
Should be a problem.
Now, when you look at the ballot counting machines, assuming we do that, these, these fees every year, they will always be there every year. Is that typically something you would also attach to a trust fund account, or would those you?
That would normally probably be a budgetary thing, but if it's going to be a recurring thing, and if we get, if we all agree that the poll books are the way to go, um, then I think that that would be an ETF thing, and then we could actually add money for a twenty-year purchase of a new machine to replace that one.
On top with the fees.
Right.
Programming and all that.
Yeah, programming and, and the future purchase of another machine that's replacement or something, and you know what I mean, we might have to.
So how much is the programming for just the?
Three hundred, that's three hundred, uh, no, that was more, wasn't it?
That's five hundred.
That was five hundred.
Per election, right?
Per election.
So I'd like to see if, instead of going Andrea's budget for the fees, let's say four years, you know, four elections next year. I would rather just see it in the trust fund, we just.
Trust fund.
We just change the language.
Yeah.
Encompasses machines and the fees.
Okay.
For every election.
Yeah, just give us something so I can bring it to a meeting in writing.
Whatever, whatever the cost, we put the money into it.
The fees go up five percent every year, that's in our contract, I add that into the warrant?
Yeah.
Okay.
So next year, you say, you know, you got two thousand dollars, whatever.
Okay, okay.
And on top of that, additional money, like Chris said, for twenty years down the road, we gotta change some, you know.
Right.
Ballot counters.
So don't just add the fees in there with the, with the two percent increase or every year.
Yeah.
Also add an additional twenty five hundred bucks or a thousand dollars.
Thousand bucks, two thousand bucks.
A thousand bucks, so make it twelve hundred, you know, with a two percent increase or every year. For fees and with the interest and future purchase of referred to replacement.
Right. That simplifies the process.
Okay.
In the note to the trustees, so we'll have it in our next meeting, if you take a look at what they've discussed today, thank you.
Jim?
And just to. Just to update, uh, the five hundred dollars a year is for the ballot counter.
Correct.
Yes.
That's the maintenance charge, that's a flat annual thing, regardless of how many elections we have.
So there's down the programming charge with the ballot counter?
There's a three hundred dollars per election programming charge.
How much you?
Three hundred.
Three hundred per election.
No, five, five for the voting, the ballot machine.
That's not what they told me.
But that's what was in the contract.
That's what he had given her.
And.
Does, uh, Jim have a co- uh, pa- uh, contract?
I have a, I have a contract.
Man, man.
Yes, please.
So the programming is not listed in the contract that I could see. What had happened is we had reached out to Voting Works to try to, for the budgeting. Um, and I reached out as well to the gentleman who we have contacts with. Um, and when they said it, they just said five hundred slash programming, and I had to actually reach out and say, is this just one time or is this each election? That's when we got the answer, so I had not seen it inside.
There's a little bit more to that.
Okay.
If the election is, let's say, town and school, each of those count as an election, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So it's a thousand.
So that's a thousand, yeah.
So it's four hundred.
Yeah.
Well, that depends on how we process the school ballots.
No, it was about what color paper it was, it was.
Well, up to this point in time, we've always had a separate ballot box for the school. We haven't processed them.
Okay.
They go into the ballot box, we don't even have a key for it.
Okay.
Okay.
So that wouldn't go through our county machine.
Okay.
So that, if, if that continues to be the process.
Yeah, then we kind of eliminate the.
If it changes, oh, now we have to count those too, well then, yeah.
And we did have, during the demo, we did have that discussion too, that if the school district finds out that we have a county machine.
I was gonna, right.
They may, remember that, they may ask.
Absolutely, yes. And.
And can you say no?
And I've had no answers about that, and, uh, you know, it could go either way, I don't know.
Should we poke the bear when we meet with them tomorrow?
Yeah, as long as they wanna pay the five hundred bucks, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it would be three hundred, right, for the.
Uh, I, I'd rather get a little extra money.
We don't.
That was a legitimate question, should we poke, cause we have a meeting with superintendent tomorrow.
Yeah, we can.
And the business administrator.
Yeah.
So, we can ask that question tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely pose the question.
All right, so going forward, we're gonna still stay on hold for the poll books.
Right.
You agree with that?
On hold, not canceled, cause right now we're in cancel status.
Right.
So.
So am I supposed to email them and put them on hold, or should I keep it as the cancel?
Well, I think he kind of left it where.
Yeah, he said we could, whenever we're right, we could.
Yeah, I think they have the, I know, I think they have the books, I mean.
And how good is a quote?
Yeah.
How long is a quote good?
I don't think they'll say no, you can't have it.
I mean, what do we have to verify to make, you know, to, going forward, do we order it or we don't?
I mean, one, I would start off with, is it going to be more workload for the clerks and moderators, supervisors and the poll workers that are there?
It's gonna cost more.
Um, I think the cost is one thing to also include and see if it's something reasonable for the town and, and the best, uh, best interest of the town. If someone wants to look deeper into that law or contact the Secretary of State to confirm one, if it's an approved, state approved. Because that's definitely a purpose and the trustees, that's state approved. But also, um, reaching out to Secretary of State to ensure that even if we do have this electronic poll book, do we need to still manually do it? I mean, it's there in the law, doesn't mean that I haven't found anything that changed, but ask them while someone's reaching out to them, I mean. To cover all of our bases. I can do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's good at that.
So you're looking at about a month timeframe? Got all the answers?
I was gonna ask, what's the deadline for you to, to put in your order?
That was a question.
Are you trying to get it before town meeting?
Yeah, we got to Mar- March.
And training and all that before that, or, you know.
You know, Caitlin and I had a discussion that I would take some of the load for this. You know, I could be the point contact person for training and that stuff. So, I don't know, do we still wanna go that way? I mean, I haven't really done much, cause I've been on vacation. But, uh, you know, but we don't want too many chiefs.
No, just one chief.
We should have.
Yeah.
We should.
Between you and Andrea.
A couple of people, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would work that between you and Andrea. Yeah.
And I'll get back to Caitlin if I ever get an answer from DRA.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we're on hold for the. Polls. For now. And the delivery of the counting machine is supposed to be when?
I have, I have no idea about a date for delivery, that I'm unaware of.
I thought they mentioned like January in your email exchange with Ben.
Did it say that?
I mean, I might just be dreaming this, but. Hey, you had a lot of back and forths with him.
So, should we meet down the road, like say in another month or two to see what all type of information?
If anything, if for some reason the plans change and.
We have additional.
All decide they want to go forward with it, I'd say a month, so that way you can ensure getting it by town meeting.
Yeah, we start getting the answers, by the time we collect all the answers, the questions, we'll schedule a meeting from there and say this is where we're at.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. So, get the answers.
Okay.
And Jim, uh, I know you're re- you're trying to find something, I'm sorry to. So you and I also talked about, doesn't, isn't there something to do with the voting location and the delivery of the voting machine? Because there was a question about this.
And that's a separate thing, and by the way, I just saw here in the email from Ben, he says, expect delivery around January for your March election.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, okay, so in regards to that. Yeah, I think there were a bunch of questions in terms of, uh, I think the spirit of it is that we become independent of the school system. And whatever, you know, might in the future become complicated, shall we say. But I think it's also important to remember that, you know, we need to have a, a big space, uh, so we wanna be sure it's big enough. Uh, it needs to be controlled, in other words, what the state causes within the rails or whatever. Where you can't have people working in offices or something walking through the polling place. So in terms of layout, and I don't know whether any.
It's open layout, it's an open, built a room, separate.
So, there's gotta be some consideration made for, oh, well, we have to control keeping those people out of the polling place. So you need room for that, you know, even if it's a three foot corridor for them to skirt around. Uh, same thing with restrooms, I think you've got some restrooms in there. Um, and I don't know whether those would be accessible to office staff and to the.
Yes, to the public. Staff will be.
Yeah, staff will still be here, that'll be separate, so.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, so there's just that minutia stuff.
Yeah, we check all the boxes as far as that all goes.
Okay.
With the plans of this, if it moves forward and it, there, you know.
What's the capacity for the people?
Well, actually, as it turns out, the capacity is a lot higher than what we thought, cause we were, we were figured somewhere in the three thirty to three eighty range. And, um, Lee came in and told us a much higher number.
Like four or five hundred or something, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I, I just have to look up for voting, the square footage between the stanchions and everything and the. Increase with your vote, we're at like eleven hundred and eighty six voters, I don't know if twelve hundred is the, the next, where you have to go bigger, I don't know where that is.
Yeah, so we, we, so when we were meeting with that way back when and talking about the square footage, Caitlin looked that up and, you know, I, I think we went.
Yeah. Do you know what the next break is?
I think we went to the twelve hundred number, because that was like a rough thing and how mu- how much space we needed. And we're well within that threshold, we actually, this right here is essentially the square footage of the gymnasium, that was the whole reason.
So that, okay.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Of the meeting space.
Yeah, it had any reference to how big that was.
Of the meeting.
Yeah, I did that later, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have plenty.
No, cause this one is, uh, you know, already not. Not legal, this is, this room is not legal, the last two elections we had in here.
Yeah, cause this. They've given us a pass essentially, but abusing this room.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't right up against that next number.
Oh, we're well, well beyond that, so.
Excellent. Cool.
That, that space right here.
Yeah, cause the gym has plenty of room.
Minus the bathrooms is fifty by sixty.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
So, that's more than, I mean, that was the whole, the, the tire footprint is eighty by sixty. The PD would be taking away thirty feet, and you have roughly, uh, let's say ten by ten, two hundred square feet, two hundred square feet taken away from the bathroom, so.
Now, how would people enter that polling place?
So there's, they'll.
Can't see all the details.
As, as proposed, I know, I should have left my drawing up there, it was actually. Uh, so, man doors here, there's actually gonna be an emergency door here. Plus that door right there is gonna lead to a breezeway that goes into that space as well, so. There's two double automatic doors, at least one of them has to be handicap push button, it opens. Fire lane with handicap parking, so on and so forth, handicap bathrooms. This, for all intents purposes, this will be the, the head of the meeting space, much like this is. Cause this is where, this space is where this action's gonna take care of planning board, zoning board.
Plague bins meeting.
Potentially, town meeting could be here. Uh, with seating, bathrooms in the rear, emergency exits, whatever, so again, voting. It would actually be easier to cordon off than the gymnasium is now, because we have to do the barricade for the back doors.
Yeah, the wall of doors.
So, yeah, I mean, we would theoretically just have to do that emergency exit for that, so.
And disregard the rest of it, and Mr. Pikeit likes to draw.
Oh, is that where, is that where that's all coming from?
Oh, I was sure that would be up.
Somebody, oh yeah, I see somebody, uh, so my grandson did the rope course and somebody's now added a zip line to the rope course.
Leave the pine trees up or whatever.
You know, you might get the approval if you put those things in.
Uh, we're not gonna push it.
My son, thank you for clarifying those things, and, uh, you know, I can, uh, I can foresee that. It'll make it more fluid for us to keep it here.
Totally agree, totally agree.
Yeah.
Right.
Are we all good?
We got some, we got a list of questions we need answered, and we'll, we'll reconvene when we receive all the answers.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Thank you all.
She's writing up the warrant for the, uh, the change of purpose also?
Yeah. In the meantime, we still need an answer of the purpose, and if it meets the purpose.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Because it once, it once, once upon a time, it did.
I'm gonna call somebody who's not a direct person.
Yeah? Oh. Look.
There's a three signature, three pages.
What's that?
No, you gotta do the other two.
Well, we're right to the rear, I didn't know there was three pages, I went right to the rear.
Thank you, Jim. All right, budgets.
Well, we'll go through these as best we can.
Right.
Okay, I need to minimize this a little bit because.
Let you back at.
Okay, all right, so.
Dash O one.
I tried to put everything in order the best I can, so, um, I apologize if anything may be a little misfiled throughout this.
So the new, uh, codes are dash O one, dash, all that stuff?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So forty one thirty is the executive, and then each thing is.
Correct, so, um, with this one, the only, one of the biggest ones that I want you guys to discuss is the contracted services, but. Um, I'll go through real fast, so cell phone is a new addition this year, um, where I got the, um, town cell phone, so that's new. I only have about a month or two of having that phone in my possession for billing purposes. So I kind of rounded up from the last two bills and went through a whole year. So that's why I brought that to five fifty, I wanted to round up just in case if there are any. Anything that would be raised through that, um, phone company. Contracted services, um, historically has always been budgeted for ten thousand. At town meeting, as we all know, it was voted and approved to raise that specific line item to twenty two thousand for the building. Now, where we are still in the building phase, I didn't know where you guys would like that to be budgeted at, so I wanted to bring that as a conversation. Nothing's been spent out of at this moment.
Right.
I gotta wait for Chris to come back.
And Leo, just cause I see you doing things, they've all changed. So you're gonna see things on the budget to actual that's not gonna match that budget sheet, cause they've now moved into their respective line items.
Well, I'm just looking at the bottom line, you have a total of ninety seven thousand, your existing budget's one eighty seven, so I'm saying, what the hell's the difference here?
Saving you some money.
You said it moved.
The twenty two, also the, um.
I know, yeah, but that doesn't still make a difference.
Well, because.
Ninety thousand.
So for example, finance administrators moved to finance.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to see.
Yeah.
Assessing too?
Assessing moved to the assess, to an assessing line item, or to a account, budget account.
Who's the selection support staff?
That would be like Heidi.
Okay.
So she's still in this one, she's listed under, um, I believe it's a sal- salary. No, the still support staff.
So the salary for the trust fund is, uh, moved to the trustees?
Yeah, they have their own.
Town reporter.
Computers moved to, is that under finance, do you remember?
I think, yeah, I think they were all under the.
They went to finance.
All right, so you, you got rid of about six items out of your forty one thirty.
Correct, so they're, they're moved to other locations that are respective to DRA's guidelines.
Which is good, thank you.
Yeah, so that's why you're gonna see a huge difference between the budget to actual to what's gonna be proposed for budgeting this year.
Okay, so we're on forty one thirty dash O one dash.
You got that right.
Two contracted services.
So.
You're looking for a price.
Yeah, I wanna see what you guys have thoughts of, I don't wanna just plop in ten thousand, especially if, you know, come next year, we're still on the building side of things. Um, I don't want to necessarily lowball it, but unless we have the same situation as we did last year. And they raise it at town meeting, but I just.
So we, I, my feeling is we did it once. So, it was raised for preparation for this, if that fails. This is either gonna be tabled, or they're gonna say go back to the drawing board, and at that time, the conversation can happen on the floor and raise it back up. So I think whatever we had in twenty-twenty-four.
Which was ten thousand.
Then that's what contracted services should be.
Do we see any besides the building? Any other contracted services?
Historically, the only time I saw that, that line had been, well, I can't say that because G-Works came out of it too, but now that has its own line. Um, I'm so sorry about that, um, the only other time that I saw contracted services be used was for Christopher Williams Architect. And that was it. Um.
And that was for the town hall, wasn't it, correct?
Yeah, I believe.
What, okay.
But that's where that had come out of at the time, other than that, it's not a bad idea to kinda have it there just in case.
Oh, yeah, you are.
You have to have something.
But, I mean, I wouldn't see another twenty thousand, which is why I wanted you guys to discuss, so.
I, I say drop.
I think Chris makes a good point, bring it back down to ten, so it's fair.
Awesome.
Cuz I, I mean, if this doesn't pass at town meeting. We are coming back in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven with a replacement double Y trailer.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna need an engineer playing for that, so.
That's true.
Can you round off that number of your salary?
I thought I did, did I not? Oh, I did, I am so sorry.
Either five ninety-one or something like that.
I thought, I thought I rounded it off, I'm sorry.
So it's gonna be five ninety-one?
Just make it even fifty.
Um, I, other than that, everything's pretty much level or lowered. Um, salary's two point five percent increase, which I believe is what the budget had recommended. Um, the town reports I did increase because I ordered two hundred last year and the total came to fi- fifteen fifty-seven, so. I just rounded it to sixteen, so that way.
That's good.
Over.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, training, we've been, you know, it's either free or there might be a few charges. So I ended up lowering that one to eight hundred, just in case if something else comes up, but I see the need for a thousand in there.
So we got a hundred and seven, a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars, correct?
Yeah.
I have a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty-two, is that what you're saying?
Yes, oh, forty-two, excuse me. Cuz you rounded up.
Yep.
Thought I heard a hundred and seventy-five, I'm like, I don't think it's that high.
What was wearing her?
I don't know.
I don't know, and she went back by, um. She wasn't here for.
Maybe she, uh, got a letter from Rebecca saying she was in violation of the TP in the front yard.
That TP.
We're on.
Um.
It's funny.
So, let's see, are we, do we have any questions regarding this one here?
Um.
Did I have to make a motion?
No, 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 this is work session, so we're not, I don't, this doesn't get presented until later on. I just wanna go through and make sure everything's, you know, ready to go for the presentations, just like what we did last year.
Got it. You did.
Okay, I have a question on postage, though, we've reused up twenty-one eighty-seven.
So, the reason I stuck with twenty-two. Um, is we're at the twenty-one, the, that high, because we wanted to get enough stamps. We're, right now, we're without the postage machine, we do have a demo Wednesday with Quadian, so we'll probably be looking at that to see what the prices are. But that's why we're up there, wanting to get, wanting to get stamps while they're still seventy-three cents before you increase, so.
So with the demo, demo with the new, you're looking at a new postage machine to do to certify mail and all that stuff, right? So where's that gonna, if we do, you're planning to purchase something this year on that?
So, if we were to do that, and we were to get it, that would, usually when they do the renting option, like how we had it before, it came out of office supplies. Under forty-one thirty, um, and right now forty-one thirty office supplies, we are at seventeen hundred out of our five thousand.
Okay.
So, I kept that level for right now, but I could change it if we see that it will need to be.
My opinion, and I talk, I, I specifically use the words, my opinion to Andrea earlier. Is our postage should be our postage, and I think that the postage machine. Whether it's a rental or purchase or what, should be added to her budget for town court tax collector, the need for it is in that office. That's clearly been identified, and I think it should be separated.
That makes sense.
Should be added to her budget, and then our postage is our postage and stamps.
May, may I just ask for clarification, so, are you just saying just the postage, or are you talking about the machine rental itself?
The machine rental is hers.
Alright.
Is that office, I sh- I shouldn't say hers, that office.
Postage, and that's where I got.
And, like, so the machine is there and the postage, like stamps and, you know, that sort of thing.
Add that to.
We have our own, we have our own budget for that, so, having, that's my opinion, so if that's.
I agree with that, I agree with.
If that's the case, do we, do we still need twenty-two hundred dollars?
No, five thousand, we don't need five thousand.
No, so the postage is just our postage.
For our office, for.
For our office, correct, which, um, I don't know if we need it that high. But a lot of the times, if, like, for example, with deading, if people are buying, I have to send certifies, now, that's not a lot, but if we have a lot, it could add up quickly.
Can we reduce office supplies?
No, office supplies is separate from postage.
Right.
I, I know, but she said the equipment was, the.
The postage machine was bottom office supplies?
Yes.
So, I have.
Are we still moving forward with getting rid of the office supplies from the departments?
This, well, the office supplies and what it's listed as, this has actually been, this has been a placeholder for our, the big printer, which we could move that to. If we needed to, um, the printer lease, the printer, other little charges, like the, um, usage.
Where's that go now?
That all goes into office supplies.
So the doors for the printers.
The printer lease and the charges we get per page, which is like thirty bucks a month.
And that's where it's going in right now, right?
Correct, it go, it's going into office equipment currently.
Of, office equipment.
Oh, yeah, it's listed as office equipment, but on here is office.
So that's for, uh, seventeen hundred bucks so far, right?
Correct. And I see for the rest of the year, we'd probably look at another.
Five hundred.
I would say six hundred to round up, but yeah.
So can we reduce it by two thousand?
I was gonna say three, can we do, can we do that, take it to three, so reducing it by two?
By two.
Oh.
That's what I meant, reverse it.
I was sitting there, I'm like.
I was basically saying the same thing.
I thought he was saying, put it at two thousand, and that's what made me nervous.
Take it down.
No, no, not, not two, three, right.
So, we all agreement, so that we can?
Yeah.
So now bring it down to one oh five?
Mm-hmm, five forty-two.
That, well, real quick, before you start mocking up your pa- paper too much, so is the twenty-two for posted still sufficient, or is that? Do, do we can drop that down or no? I get what you're saying about the title, the deading.
Please let me look into it a little bit more, we can put that as a mark for right now, and.
We know we need at least that much.
We've used it in the past, so.
But, let me rephrase that, cuz I keep, I, wha- what's. Thought up here and what's coming out is completely flip-flopped, I just did that with Leo, so, what I meant to say was, that's the maximum we'll need.
Correct.
Is twenty-two hundred.
Correct.
We could potentially go with less, but we're not gonna need any more than that.
No.
Okay. So, we leave that at that, so we're at one oh five.
With Rhonda, so he'll get that, feel bad. Hope she's not watching.
That's the, uh, that's, that's a fringe cut, that's a fringe coming out of me, see, I told you, it comes up.
Okay, so we're down one oh five, five forty-two.
That's what I got, yep.
Yep.
Okay, wow, yeah.
Um.
Next one?
I gotta remember what one you had next.
Legal.
You have legal max, okay. That helps me out, alright, so, legal.
Yeah, we didn't spend much this year.
Yeah, I, level, I leveled it at fifty, um.
Do we need to?
Hold on, let me just pull, you know, I looked at it earlier, but.
Do we have a breakout of all the dash O one to dash O eight, as far as?
We have, they're right here.
Yeah, they're broken now, it's, so, the problem is, is you do a whole legal budget, cuz you can't obviously expect who's gonna use more. And it's broken down after that, so like, you'll see, even on the invoices, I'll write like, you know, a hundred BOS or a hundred plan. Um, that's how like, it's broken down to, um, yeah, I mean, this year, we've been knock on wood in pretty good standings. Um.
Forty-two percent only used.
Really?
I just, I mean, totally up to you guys, I don't know if you wanna be.
Prior to Mina, did we, uh, raise that?
It was at seventy thousand.
Was it seventy?
Seventy, we, we dropped it to fifty a couple of years ago.
Last year.
Last year.
And then, uh, you know, prior to that, it was down to thirty, forty thousand dollars. And then we started having, well, we had. A, um, lot of legal stuff with, uh, one particular resident on Townhouse Road. And that was one of the driving factors, and then Mina happened, and that was a driving factor, and then once we came to the term, well, one of the other things was the, um. Um, uh, the Emissaries, the settlement.
Yeah, right.
Right, right, right.
So once that got taken care of, that's when we agreed to drop it down, and, I mean, quite frankly. Excuse me, we haven't talked about it yet. But we, uh, fine, got the final legal, um, ruling.
Yep.
So that's done.
Mm-huh.
The other one is, um, done, for all intents purposes, knock on wood. The Emissaries is done.
Drop it.
I say we drop it.
Yeah, what, what are we gonna drop to? You thinking thirty?
Yep, that's, that's what I was thinking, I was, I mean, we're at forty-two, I don't wanna bite my nose off despite my face and go all the way to say twenty-five, but. I'll say thirty.
I would say thirty.
I would say thirty.
Go down to twenty-five.
Did we do an R F, or?
R P, yeah, we are, we, it's on our to-do list.
Okay. I agree.
Alright, so.
I like this, we're dropping money.
Yes, this section, you may not see much of a drop, so, next one, you should have forty-one ninety-four dash O one, am I correct?
You got it.
Yep, alright, so, when you look at this compared to your budget to actual, there's been, um, a few changes here. So. I tried to do this one the best I could while trying to figure out what's going on for the rest of it as well. Um, starting off with forty-one ninety-four dash O one for government buildings. Um, we have the salary for building maintenance, now that is when Brad comes and shovels. Um, that is also for when he would do some other things for you guys, you know. Off of his transportation hours. Um, you know, like, when he came to shovel the roof or.
We didn't have this in forty-one ninety-four for shoveling and all that?
We do, it's.
Where?
At the, let's see, it's kinda hidden, so if you look on page six. You have maintenance, supplies and equipment, it's all tied into one.
Oh, that thirty thousand, that thirty thousand?
Sorry, right underneath it, I apologize, salaries. I'm sorry.
Who's stapled these together? I got page four, six, five.
Really?
Yeah, four and five are flip-flopped, see, that's page four, and you got page six.
No wonder I couldn't.
That's why I'm like, getting lost, I'm like, what the hell is going on here?
Those, those could have been the ones I did, I'm sorry. I took a copy of the ones I had at first.
Reading, here.
Thanks.
So now.
So, page six. Yeah, I was looking.
Cuz I'm looking, I'm like, where the hell is it?
Well, and that was when I took a copy before I realized they were out here, so, that was me, I apologize.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
No, that was me.
No, I'm talking.
Oh, oh.
Forty-one ninety-four, it's hidden maintenance.
Under maintenance, supplies and equipment, you'll see salaries, it's a total of ten thousand.
Yeah.
And that holds salaries for both Brad, when he does the shoveling. And, um, stuff outside of the transportation hours, like shovel on the roof or, um, maybe some pickup stuff.
When we do like, the tires and stuff like down the side of the road, is that come out of that too?
Outside of tran- uh, transportation hours, yeah.
So, what about when he's, cuz we, he's been helping Kevin, that hasn't been coming out of that, right? Okay.
It has not.
Okay.
So.
So, I think that when he does tires, it should come out of, cuz that's roadside, I think that too should come out of the road budget.
Or waste management.
Or waste management.
One of the other.
I think right now, and, um, we'll get to that further, I know that's placed in another place right now too, with all this new budgeting stuff.
Okay.
So I believe it might actually be in the streets, Highland Street, so.
There is a spot for salary under that.
That's, that's what I.
Added a salary to that, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
So, but this, for building maintenance, it's just gonna be mostly for shoveling, or, um, and, you know. Um, sanding or something, the pay, walkways.
What about lawn, uh, mowing lawns and all this?
That's, that's on there too, it's the landscaping down below, this is just, this is just the salary for Brad, right at the moment.
Got it.
Um.
Bye, bye.
See ya, bud.
So, I did, um, twenty-five hundred, and the reason why I did that. Thinking of it quite after, this has everything included, when I had the detail. So I can't unless I go through each time sheet depict what was, um, shoveling versus what could have been, what could have been this. Um, so we possibly could lower that down a little bit more. Um, let's see, I do have.
What was the total budget for that?
Spent.
All, well, it's all clumped in one at ten thousand, and that's also including.
But how much should we spend?
Yeah, we got fifteen thousand so far, right?
Uh, no, hold on, you, we've spent forty-seven hundred, almost forty-eight out of the ten thousand.
All the salaries, right?
Yeah.
And most of that was Brad's?
Uh, no, I'd say it's half and half between, um, Brad and janitorial.
And janitorial was all this year?
Cleaning this building and.
And, uh, she started when?
February.
Okay. I'll leave it like it is.
I'm gonna be proposing the access control system install for this building in next year's budget. And that would be a spot to pay Tyler for his install labor.
Add the twenty-five hundred bucks?
Yes.
That's a one-time thing, though. I would, I would more lean towards that coming out of contract services.
I, I would say so, yeah.
Do you think?
Cuz that's a one-time thing. You know what I mean?
Yeah, if you think.
So thi- this is, this is like a.
I was looking at it as labor for building services, building maintenance.
Right, so, yeah, so, like, contract services is anything outside of like a road contract.
Shoveling, snow, whatever.
Assessing contract, that sort of thing, um, this is like employees, and then you have like the one-time. Fly, it's a service on a, on a building, that would be contract services, just like the, the lease. Um, fees for.
Right.
You know, writing, so that's like a one-time.
Right.
That's, that's where I'm at, so.
Okay, I'll do that.
So if you have, if you take jan- custodial, janitorial, is that, is that still a proper word to use in today's?
I think we normally use custodian.
So custodial, uh, services and building maintenance, that's, uh, so that's fifty-five hundred, and we've spent four.
We're at forty-eight right now.
We're at, just under five, which has done the same thing, so I would agree that that should probably stay right there.
And mind you, like I said.
Right?
For the building maintenance side of things, I couldn't separate them all, so now that if they're gonna be separated into different locations. I think the twenty-five would be, you know, more, more doable.
Okay.
Well, good. And landscaping, it says BOS, so we need, we're separating that between mowing the cemetery, mowing here and.
Cemetery, so cemetery has one, and I did put in forty-three twenty-three, which is the. Or maybe it's forty-three twenty, I put it in one of the, um, transportation ones for landscaping.
For the twice a year.
Yeah, because that was one thing we had discussed as well, so, um, I have that one so, there, but this would be for this building. And for, I don't know, do we do the fire station, so this would be all other municipal buildings.
So town hall, the old library.
I don't know if we do library, I honestly.
That would be libraries, there, I seen like the library.
You have, alright, so, we must do that one as well, I haven't seen an invoice, which is why I put BOS and I bolded it. I asked for an invoice when I had called last time, um, to also remind them not to mow the landfill. And I still have not got one, so I don't know what the going rate is on that. Um, and I didn't get a call today, cuz I've been trying to get this all squared away.
Alright.
I can put it on hold for the meantime, but.
Okay, so this, uh, the landscaping will, will be all the, the buildings except for the waste, uh, the.
The landfill, the cemeteries.
And the cemeteries. Okay, so once you have that number.
Yeah, I'll, I'll inform you guys once I have that number.
Good.
I just don't have that at the time, um, any other questions for this one here?
No, good.
Alright, we're going to another forty-one ninety-four, this one is dash O two, this is for building maintenance. So, um, this is the usual thirty thousand dollar one, it's the one that's right above salaries, that says maintenance, supplies and equipment. Um, now, this is where we're gonna have a little bit of a decent conversation. Um, we have had the conversation during a work session quite some time ago, when all the staff were here. Um, we were expressing about the supplies, and we were also expressing about bulking the supplies and. Having everything kinda come through one budget.
Mm-huh.
This would be that budget. Um.
So this includes fire department here in the library?
The school.
Um, yeah.
Not the library.
Library should be budgeting for their own supplies, that was the conversation about two years ago.
So this is just, uh, minus library.
Minus library, so this would be.
Lance, uh, recycle, like, fire station in this.
And PD and the building.
The only thing I'd say is we should delineate office supplies, paper clips, pens, whatnot and janitorial. At least my opinion is the office supplies, the pens and pencils and that kinda stuff would be probably backup under executive. And then toilet paper and cleaning products would be under this.
This used to be maintenance and supplies and equipment. I mean, my difficult part is, is I'm the ordering person. So if people need supplies, they'll usually come to me, other than JT Tyler, they usually can grab their own. Me having to figure out whose budget goes where gets very frustrating, so I have to reach out to them and say where you want this from. Where do you want this to go, what line item? Because usually I have to use my credit card or W B and I have to figure out where they're going. I wouldn't mind it if it's in forty one thirty for the supplies, but I just, I don't know.
I just think that there should be in forty one thirty, there should be for the office supplies, pens and pencils, paper clips, that stuff. And then in this budget, there should be a supply line for everybody as well, but that's the. Janitorial type supplies, toilet paper, towels.
What it is when you're ordering it.
You guys don't use pencil paper and all that stuff?
We do, we do currently.
But that'd be on the office.
The goal is to have those cabinets stocked out there, so if I need a binder, there's a binder in here that I come and sign out. And then when I take it, Caitlin replenishes or, or however that system works, but.
So you wanna put it in her, her budget, forty one thirty?
Well, that was the idea is, is everybody is under one, so that we don't have a board or commission going out and spending. Hundred dollars on paper clips and we got four boxes of them in here. Cause that's what's been happening in the past, they're buying their own rather than using the stock we already have, that was a conversation from that day we had the work session.
Right, right, so we can eliminate that out of your budget and put it all.
Correct, and, and everybody else too for that matter.
Right, but leave it all in this. This could be the placeholder, right?
I guess just the question is, do we want, well, I, office supplies to be under building maintenance?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I kinda, I kinda agree with JT's. Thinking is office supplies is office supplies. Building maintenance. I, I kinda. I kinda agree with that and then building maintenance could also be. If one of the cameras failed. It came out of that, if we had to buy a toilet, it came out of that. Building maintenance supplies and that's building maintenance supplies and drop the.
I think where I'm getting confused or got confused is because previously historically it's maintenance, supplies and equipment. And I may have not looked at it so closely.
That should almost be a separate, you know, the building maintenance should be one line in itself and that would be, you know, fixing a toilet or something like that.
Maintenance budget, right there.
And then supplies would be ordering your disposable, you know, replenishable.
I, I hate to, I hate to go backwards, but um, forty one thirty. Does that, do we need to increase the office?
Office supplies, yeah, so instead of taking it down to three, keep it at five. Put it back up to five.
Is that sufficient?
I might go to like seven, because remember you're gonna be taking it from all the other budgets too. And we're gonna need to do an initial stock up of the cabinet.
So we need to figure.
Can we put that one on hold?
We, we need to look at everybody else's budget for their office supplies.
Everything to figure that out, so I don't feel comfortable.
We'll leave that one where it is for now. On the maintenance underneath the current one that we're working on, under forty one ninety four oh two.
Right, so in this case, historically it's been thirty thousand, went up to thirty five one year and we've dropped it down. Um, we're currently at fifteen, I think. We're at fifteen, now that also is including, you know, some other standard supplies.
But you've been putting your office supplies in this?
Some of them, like the paper, like the all general one, because it's maintenance, supplies and equipment currently as we have it.
Can we drop it at least to twenty?
That's what I was thinking.
If we're gonna be putting some stuff into mine, it's easier to level out a budget that way.
Well, I mean, we're, we're, we had thirty, we're only at forty, uh, fourteen, we're only at fifty one percent.
I think twenty would be.
Yeah, we take that ten and we might have to add that ten in forty one thirty.
That's what I would do.
So, awesome. And then we won't separate off by each budget because, or bu- building, cause we don't know what that would be.
Yeah, we don't know.
Opinion of the board while we're on this topic. So like fire station one, we need to replace a bunch of the lights in the bay, for example, we just need to buy the lights. Is that something that we would wanna try and fund out of this, or is that something we should plan the projects and appropriate them to a, the E T F?
I would put it in the E T F.
Okay, that's kinda what I was thinking, I had a couple, a couple small things like that that I wanted to plan for next year and my thought was, when I make the presentation, well. This is my plan for the E T F, can we fund it for that?
I do wanna say I like how you're planning it for next year, because the E T F, we just have the ten, the twelve thousand coming out of it too, so.
And, I mean, quite frankly, we don't know the direction that this is gonna travel, we did have the conversation about. You know, and of course.
At least you got bathrooms.
That's true.
The engine and.
Yeah, the other stuff.
So what is all the rest of this, sixty eight school street?
So that's when something's purchased out of, so say, you know, the, the town hall needs a new toilet. It goes under sixty eight school street.
There's no money allocated to them, but the expenses will come out of them.
All from out of forty one ninety four oh two, the top one, that twenty thousand.
That way we can have a better track of how much each.
So we're done with that one.
If no questions, we're done, so next you should have forty one ninety four oh three propane.
Not that we can't just.
I don't know where the propane is.
You have a propane?
Highways and streets.
Did I not print that? Do you guys have electric too?
Nope, nope, we get telephone and.
Must be somewhere to that budget, the actual page screwed up.
No, I apologize, I must have gone through so quickly.
We have advertising.
Alright, I'm gonna print these two real fast.
While, while she's doing that, um, are we under contract with the propane company right now?
I don't think so. We, I, I was actually talking about that and thinking about that today.
That they fill as we need it.
So we should be putting out an R F P for our fuel every year?
I'll go out on a limb and say I cannot stand. They're so difficult to work with, so.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I.
I have a problem, I, I, I wouldn't use AmeriGas.
Maybe uh, we could solicit some bids before the end of the budget.
Well, who do you have, Eastern and who else? T J Brown?
C N Brown.
They don't do propane. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I always listen.
For propane, C N Brown will put in a bid and they sub it out to suburban and that. But I mean, there's gonna be, you're talking into tanks and.
But the costs, do we pay upfront for the tanks?
It's all part of the rent. It's part of the fee, I'm sure.
I could pull that kinda information too, see what we got.
Could actually somewhat pull that right in front of you, cause his Eastern flips the man- manifesto too in front of you.
Eastern?
No, we need AmeriGas.
I mean AmeriGas. Sorry. It should show like a rental.
My tank's very, my tank. I just check, I only used a hundred gallons last year.
There's no rental. You have the hazmat fee, fuel recovery and paper invoice and the propane, there's no rental fee.
I think a lot of times if you're on automatic, they don't charge the rental fees, it's just a.
And you're a big enough customer.
I mean, I, I think it would be worth our while if we could toss out a quick R F P looking for like a multi-year contract with a new vendor.
I don't think you'd need a contract, but.
I, if you can lock in a multi-year contract rate wise.
Hate to put it on your list, but can you do that or?
Where am I, alright, so I.
Forty one ninety four?
Yep, I just handed you the other ones.
Propane.
Propane.
So.
Where's the propane?
It's under heating fuel on your B two A.
And we're already over budget.
Starting at page five.
Is that the fifteen six hundred?
And we're at eleven eight right now, eleven eighty one.
Who's our biggest uh, user?
I have that information somewhere in here.
I wonder why the library is such a big user of propane when we did all this money for installation of the building. New windows or redundant windows, star windows.
Heating fuel. Fire station number one so far this year is fourteen seventy one. Um, fire station number two is currently at twenty six hundred.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah, I'm looking at your budget actual, where are you?
Oh, no, 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 I'm on, I, I got a detail, I'm reading it off for you.
I'm like, ah, that is, those numbers are not, okay, here we go.
Hold on, hold on. I grabbed, I did this last time too, I grabbed the wrong.
Oh, your school street, uh, here is uh, three thousand seven thirty nine?
And there's just three thousand seven.
That was the biggest user.
So, alright, so for.
And narrowly.
I apologize, I'm gonna, I'm gonna restart because I think I grabbed some electricity ones. So uh, fire station two, twenty eight hundred. Library, thirty, thirty eight hundred.
You're rounding up obviously.
I am rounding up.
That fifteen hundred for the next one, thirty eight hundred for the next one. Snow road, we have nothing? Propane, do we have propane? No.
Snow road, where do you see that?
Oh, I was gonna say it's not.
Man, we have nothing on storage road, do we need to put those?
No, we don't need to put those, we don't have, that's, that would be like a.
Are you sure you're not looking at electrical or?
No, it says propane.
I may have, when I made that sheet copy and pasted all of the list of buildings. And that might be why they're there.
So cross those out. Uh, eleven eleven oh two Province White Road, what is that? Okay, so it's station one, station two.
School street, library, so other town buildings, we don't need that line either, unless we put that in, it's like a placeholder.
Take it out. I mean, we're not gonna set a propane tank some empty lot.
I put that in there for. So that is a placeholder, so that if something like that were to happen again, we have a placeholder.
Yeah, we do need other.
Didn't think of that.
So I'm gonna make that one JT, oh oh six, since we're getting rid of.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you're getting old six and old seven out, right? How much do we use, eleven thousand eight hundred? And you wanna increase it to eighteen?
So this is what I did, I kinda took the average of each um. Each bill that we have out of the detail and I kinda went mid of, like the middle of what we've been charged. And went out through the rest of the year and we were at about roughly seven thousand.
We got twenty five cent of the budget left and we have the heat, I guarantee heat's gonna be coming on. If it's not in this building, has this building been turned on yet? I guarantee it's gonna be very shortly, so.
It up, because I only went with the average and just the average was at seventeen thousand.
I'm, I'm good with eighteen.
I just rather having put a sweater on.
Well, I, I agree, but.
I would question the efficiency of those monitor heaters. They lose their efficiency very fast, when they're new, they're great, but.
Like twenty years old.
And they probably haven't been cleaned and serviced.
Probably not. I know my monitor heater was extremely efficient, it's all I use, I used three hundred and fifty gallons of heating fuel last, last heating season. Only thing I have for heat. No, we just got that one monitor heater from now.
Electricity is.
So electricity I have leveled, um, as you can see on your budget actual, it's at fifty three percent. The reason I chose to level it is because we still have three more months out of the year that haven't been built.
Why did we raise that to fifteen thousand?
Because the uh, rates went up and they go, tend to go up at August first each year and we don't know exactly. What the percentage may be. So I, I kept it level, I mean, this year, as long as nothing jumps and, you know, electricity's not being overused. We would still be.
What do you think? Or you think good, you wanna leave it there at level?
I would say level, the reason I say level, go on based off the, the um, averages. There's an increase.
So we got three months left, we used three quarters of the year so far.
We've only used half.
Right, I would go, I mean, be on a safe side, because I know electricity, they ran up. Yeah, I would, even twelve thousand.
I'm gonna do twelve.
It sounds good. Do you think it's gonna go up more though, you know what?
Well, they just uh, passed the rate.
Well, yeah, they did, but then uh, our governor said. That she wants a uh, a more stricter, so the person that oversees that, she. Fired him, right, and hired a new one. To oversee the rate changes and stuff like that.
Yeah, she was just signing off.
It happens so arbitrarily.
Yeah, it's like every year. I know, I don't pay electricity, so I don't know.
We'll get you in taxes, that's fine.
That's why I gotta knock out like a quarter million, quarter, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars off this budget, so I don't have to pay so much taxes.
Alright, so next one's the phones and JT, glad you're here too, you can kinda.
Yeah, what's going on here?
So I raised that and the reason I did is because, you know, we have those fees that we can't change, that are federally mandated. So I went based off seven hundred and ten dollars a month, each month.
Is that internet too or just phones?
I don't, I have to have consolidated, so that'd be included. Yeah, that one would have to be removed, that was my phone, I think.
Where, what page are we finding on?
At six. Telephone. So this, looks like everything is coming here to school street, which is probably the fire department and everything else, right?
So, and that's been another thing JT and I had met with them, we're asked, we asked them to separate.
Break out the bill?
Cause it's, I can't, I've tried, I need them to separate it, because I don't know who's ethernet's what and. That's why it kinda looks scattered right now, it's hard to depict, um. But I did raise it to eighty five and that is going based off seven hundred and ten dollars a month for a whole year. Oh, that's not including, you're right, no, that's just including our big bill.
Now, the library's separate, right? Okay, so we got both fire department, school street, uh, here and uh, the snow road.
The internet's on the big bill, so that's what the ethernet's rolled here and.
Okay, cause that's gonna be split on the new budget, right, phone versus internet?
Well, this one has.
That's together.
I'm currently doing the cost analysis to move us from consolidated to over to Fidium, same company, different price rate. Different pricing structures. And I think it's gonna save us a little bit of money to make the change, I just want a hundred percent verify that before any triggers get pulled. So that may change some of this billing.
So should we wait on this budget until then?
I mean, go ahead and review it if you want, but there is a chance it will change if we elect to go with Fidium.
So, we can reduce it?
Possibly.
Possibly.
But we should leave it.
Alright, we'll leave it and once it's, you're gonna get that information before you have a budget.
The other thing that's happening with the camera project. Um, we pay them a rental on some of the switches right now, which is the box that all the internet ports go into. With the camera system, we're getting our own switches, so we won't need to pay them the rentals anymore, so that. Consolidated, it's, it's not much, it's, you know, six, seven dollars a month, but.
Yeah, we'll get rid of that price, yeah.
It's something.
Alright, so we'll leave that at that for the meantime. Next one's cemeteries, forty one ninety five dash oh one. I leveled it, but I also leveled it because I don't know what the charges for mowing still, so if that happens to change, I can update that, but.
You'll have a breakdown from uh, what's it?
So um, salary, I left level, I don't think that's changed historically. You let me know, but.
Should that be a selectman's job to do that, or is that?
Uh, so we voted last year to make him a sexton, so, which was state law, so.
But that's still Lenny, right? But shouldn't that be a selectman's job?
Well, we are cemetery trustees, but he's the sexton, so he's responsible for mapping out like that deed that we just did. So he'll have to go map that out with them.
He's already done it.
And he will have to, so I mean.
I won't go there, I just wanna, I'm just saying, trying to.
Yeah, theoretically, I mean. Yeah, theoretically, I mean, we could do that, but I mean, it's, you know, so, when the, when the internment happens, and, you know, in any case, he can be present, or one of us has to be by statute.
Right.
So, that's all part of his responsibility, that's all part of that whopping five hundred dollar a year stipend, so.
Yeah, exactly.
And, like I said, if anything changes, if we get a bill that's lower on the mowing, I'll lower that, but I leveled it for right now without knowing.
So, what's the average, uh, intern, how many cemetery plots we sell every year?
I can tell you that the one you just signed is the first one I've done this year.
We usually only do one or two every couple of years.
So, is the five hundred bucks?
Well, is that the mowing, does?
No, I'm five hundred.
That's just the other, I, I thought that was the whole.
No, that's gonna be on the oh one. A lot more.
Oh, gotcha.
I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I like, personally, I'd like to see it cut down to three hundred. If he's doing one or two a year.
I mean, I don't know if he does anymore, this is what I get through and what I get paid, but.
It would have to come through.
Unless it's a burial, it's like burials and internments and stuff, he has to be present for those.
And that could be people who already have lots of purpose.
Right, so we don't know that.
So, like, you know, for example, two years ago, when my, you know, when we buried my grandfather, he's like, you're all set, and I'm like, yeah, I'll be there, so he didn't have to, cause I was just locked in, so, by default, but I mean, you know, there are other ones, we don't know when they.
I just bring it up for discussion.
That's true.
You guys feel okay with it?
I'm okay with the five, it's been the five, right? Forever.
Just looking at cutting budget.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with continent.
Okay.
I mean, realistically, I mean, the responsibilities, I mean, it's.
So, we don't know how often.
I just look, I mean, I have a pretty good idea.
I just look at it from a standpoint, you know, we're getting only paid six thousand a year, and you get five hundred dollars for.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Realistically, as far as I know, this will be the only one, this will be the only tournament this year.
This year.
So, I don't think anybody's been buried up there this year, I mean, I go and see my grandfather.
Right.
Pretty regular, and there's been no.
Dirt disturbed.
I mean, nobody's been buried there this year, so I mean, there are, believe it or not, fortunately, not gonna would.
Yeah, not gonna would.
There are years when people that have plots up there don't die, so.
Really?
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm.
Do you wanna cut it to?
Three hundred?
Yeah. So, what's that make?
Eighteen hundred? What? You're talking about bomb.
Oh, no, cut it by three hundred, we're dropping it to three hundred.
Dropping it to three.
To three, yeah.
See, remember I said the.
When you, when you looked at me like that, I didn't know if you were surprised at how fast it came back.
You think around, I, I.
Alright, next one you should add is forty one ninety seven dash oh one, advertising, kept it level.
What did we do last year?
That one, right now, we're at, um.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, now, mind you, that also has our NHMA dues, I don't know if that tends to go up. I don't want to lower it in case those do, but.
I'm glad you just said.
So, this is advertising slash dues, or is there a separate?
It is advertising slash dues, unless that.
Did you put dues separate?
Should you have a separate line, dash out too?
I, my gut would say dues should come out of executive.
But it'll.
Yeah, this is advertising.
Yes, strictly advertising, dues doesn't, uh.
But adding forty one ninety seven is advertising and dues, all the way across the board, it always has been.
Hold on, let me, let me check this real fast.
We can add it right. This is for the executive, but the dues are right on here, can we do that? Add the dues to forty one thirty?
I'm just looking, I think he's doing the same thing on.
Right, but what are the dues this is cover?
Well, I'm trying to figure out if advertising and dues is something we decided to call it, or if it's, that's the legal definition of that.
Forty one ninety seven.
Dues are for what?
Advertising and regional associations, which would also stand for dues.
So, I would just make a line under forty one ninety seven?
We'll do forty one.
Oh, you can?
Activities to further the growth or development of the municipality and participation of regional associations dedicated to these purposes.
So, forty one ninety seven dash oh two.
I tried to say this before, she told me to hold on, so. Is this where, um, Lake Region Planning comes out of, or is that in the planning boards?
I believe that one comes out of the planning.
So, what's your dues? NHMA.
NHMA.
That's it? How much is that?
Well, hang on, we gotta look at plan, where's planning board?
Well, NHMA.
Well, cause you have like, the historic district has different dues, the, um.
Right, right.
The, uh, conservation commission has dues, I mean, are they all out of those individual budgets, or?
Yes.
Yeah, so what's forty one ninety seven, what's the dues in there?
So, that would be NHMA, and then you have your advertising for like public hearings and stuff like that for the board of selectmen, cause all the other ones.
Okay, the advertisers, but how much is dues, because we wanna cut the advertising now?
Well, I'm looking right now, see if I have it up here. Might be quicker for me to go in there and pull it.
I thought it was like three, four hundred bucks. Eighty two me.
Eighty two, eh? Well, I don't think so.
Not that much?
No, I think it's in thousands, hold on, I'm gonna go pull it, might be a lot quicker if I can do that.
Planning board is sixteen forty six.
They have their own, I just verified, they have their own dues.
No, this is, you know, we should just dash out too. Break it out.
Well, it can't be in the thousand.
No, it can't be, well.
If it was in the thousands, we would be overspent by now.
Well, I think she meant a thousand.
Right, so then it's thirty five hundred, ad, with advertising, twenty five hundred thousand.
Could be a long fall. And we have to do this through budget meeting?
Well, we'll have it already hashed out, so.
That one, okay. So, it looks like there might be a couple of other things in there.
What is NHMA dues?
More can I find? Am I going crazy, could I miss that?
Patiently waiting, quick book still.
Don't hold your breath.
So slow.
So, NHMA member dues was one thousand six hundred fifty six dollars.
That's what, um, planning boards was. One thousand six hundred, where's planning board, wait. Hey, where did it go?
You said that was NHMA? So, that's not planning board, Rose, that's.
No, it's under planning, I'm saying it's under planning board, what they spent this year, on dues. Just, so, do they also pay dues?
They have.
Lake Region Planning Commission.
Wow, so their, their dues are the same as the NHMA?
It sounds like, coincidentally enough, yes, they are.
It just seems like it's a weird amount for it to be exactly the same.
Okay, so the dues are.
Sixteen forty six.
That's what she said?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly, they paid sixteen forty six to Lake Region Planning.
And that's how much NHMA was.
I'll go seven.
Sixteen forty six?
Seventeen hundred. Just gonna raise.
I found the bill in QuickBooks.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it finally opened.
Yeah, I would just, cause they're gonna raise it, yeah, seventeen.
I just wanna make sure that we didn't post the wrong dues payment to the wrong budget.
For which one, sorry?
The NHMA, you said.
NHMA is right here, forty one ninety seven.
Okay.
And that's where, that's written to.
It, it is correct.
They are. Coincidental, alright, perfect.
It just seems so weird.
So, essentially.
Eighteen hundred bucks, what?
Can you see last year's?
L R P C is the exact same dollar.
Can you look at last year's NHMA too?
So, advertising will be eighteen hundred bucks? If you got, if you had dues.
If you left it, um, level, and then you took the seventeen out from, for dues, eighteen hundred be advertising. If you left that level, um, right?
So, dues is eighteen hundred, sorry, eighteen hundred for dues?
No, seventeen.
Seventeen for dues.
And eighteen for advertising.
So.
I just want, I'm just having JT confirm, cause I wanna see if they go up.
So, you haven't used much, I mean, you only used two thousand bucks this year.
And, and sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars of that was for Lake Region, I mean, uh, NHMA.
Yeah, so, three, four hundred bucks you used for advertising, so, advertising is more for.
Public hearings.
Right.
Um.
Contractor, uh.
The, for example, auction, when that comes, it'll have to be posted.
When she posted, uh, in the newspaper, that hundred roads gonna close.
That road construction.
So, eighteen hundred bucks is enough, or is it too much?
Quite honestly, I would probably wanna put a little bit more in dues once he looks in this, and cut advertising.
Okay.
Cause I believe.
NHMA is going up?
I believe they go up every year, I don't think it's significant, like, a huge amount, but.
Yeah, I increased it fifty. Cause sixteen something.
Sixteen something, push it up to seventeen.
Do you need help?
It doesn't show anything for NHMA last year. Wonder why it's fiscal year.
Fifteen might be okay, I can pull the other one if you, unless you want me to.
Seventeen.
If you know what you're doing, go for it.
I'm trying a different one.
I just, I don't get this, the budget versus actual, page six. The first line, advertising and dues, a hundred percent of the budget's been spent, and underneath the next line, advertising and dues, other seven percent of the budget's been spent.
That's cause the thirty five hundred is on that second line.
Right.
For budget. As other.
So, if you just cross that out and said that we spent, take thirty five was our budget, total, for advertising dues.
Right.
We paid seventeen hundred dollars to NHMA.
So, that.
So, that leaves eight hundred dollars, we spent, eight hun, uh, no.
Well, we spent two thousand eighty five dollars.
So, we spent about three hundred, four hundred bucks.
Right, correct. Right now, she's asking for eighteen hundred bucks.
So, what if we made advertising two thousand?
That's a lot more.
Adver, I mean, not advertising, sorry, dues two thousand. And advertising five hundred.
Could do that, I have a problem with that.
And then that'll make it, we're dropping the whole thing, a thousand bucks.
The five hundred?
The new, no.
So, we make the dues two thousand?
Five hundred, drop it, so it'd be three thousand.
Correct, sorry.
It's okay. That's why I was in engineer.
Right. Cause I mean, if we spent just shy of four hundred dollars on advertising so far this year.
Yeah.
I mean, it's forty one ninety seven, so we gotta rob Peter to pay Paul ultimately, it's.
And if they don't use all the dues, they can advertise and increase it, yeah, like you said, pay Peter Paul.
Yeah.
Disciples, whatever.
We could probably.
Heard a lot of positive comments on the floor.
Yes.
You guys have?
I have, I heard that it looks really nice, I did hear a couple of, you're supposed to have like honey on the floor, I did hear a couple of that, and I said, well.
Where did, where do we live?
You priced it out.
It's just the timing because of the.
Exactly, that's.
Are you guys still trying to figure it, sort that out?
Yeah.
So, we're, we're putting in a two thousand for dues and five hundred for advertising, hopefully that's enough.
We're putting a thousand bucks for advertising.
I said five hundred.
Did you? I thought you said thousand.
I honestly think five would probably be.
So, doesn't that, so I was right, that is twenty five hundred, and drop a thousand bucks.
Right.
What was you saying about your engineer thinking? Engineers, engineers could do math, they can't listen?
It was in twenty twenty three, it was sixty percent.
Good point.
Okay, so, it was up and down, so it's on.
You got that, Caitlin?
Yep, two thousand for dues, five hundred for advertising. Alright, now, I, I did most, most of the budgets, now we're stepping into your guys' stuff here, um, so.
Who's the guys?
Us, board of squad.
Yeah.
Um, so, starting off with forty three eleven dash oh one highway administration, he, um.
Oh, ooh, what up? Why?
What do you mean?
It's the separation, it's the new.
Everything's, everything's separated.
It's the new coding, right?
So, um, starting off with highway administration, which pretty much, this is Kevin. Kevin's equipment, Kevin's fuel, Kevin's vehicle maintenance and fuel costs. Um, he opted out of a cellphone, so that budget, we can put a dollar in just to keep the line alive, but um, he opted out of the cellphone, so we don't have a monthly payment for that one. Um.
May I make a point on that real quick? Kevin also has a town email that I'm sure he's never even logged into. I know he doesn't want a cellphone, but what would you think about getting him like a little iPad or something that he can just check his email on, keep track of it?
I don't think he's gonna use it.
Okay.
Probably not.
If he doesn't use his phone, I mean.
Should we bother having an email forum then, or should we cut it?
I mean, if I, if it's called, I would cut.
How much it costs what?
Six and change.
I would cut it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next line is.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. What does he use now?
His cellphone.
You're right, cause I just do, uh, texting.
Probably that's mu, a more accurate way to get ahold of him, if he's never used his email.
Any potential money, any issues you can see there?
Yeah, I don't even see anything coming off the G O V, Kevin never used it.
Okay.
Do you wanna put a dollar in that, uh, cellphone?
I would say put a dollar in the cellphone, just to keep it alive.
Now, just for conversation purposes, I've heard that as a placeholder, keep it alive, i- is it really gonna go away if we don't put a dollar figure in it?
So, what that pretty much means, and during that budget training we had, that, um, Carroll County, um, buried nicely through for us. Um, um, pretty much, if you do not have it as a line item or funds being put into that, you cannot spend it. So, if, for say, down the road, Kevin goes, you know what, I'd rather have a cellphone, and it's next year, and we put zero there, we can't do anything on cellphone.
Until next year.
Until next year, when we budget for it.
Yeah.
But if we put a dollar in there.
The town is appropriating that dollar towards a cellphone, and.
Right, but it's all, but it's all forty three eleven, it's one budget.
Correct, but even that line, if it's zero.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that means we gotta put a dollar under training and vehicle maintenance and fuel.
Well, this is where this is going, so, um, equipment. Well, this is where this is going, so, um, equipment. Well, I I have things kind of, kind of prepared. I prepared, I just didn't put anything there for you.
You just said that this is up, alright, go ahead.
So if you look, the middle line that has the numbers, that's the twenty twenty-five budget.
Right.
The one next to it's where we're gonna fill in the, fill in the spots here.
Okay.
So, equipment is the next one. Does he need safety vests? Does he need certain things? Um, is there?
So we need to keep equipment in there because he's using a lot of his own tools. And I think we should stop purchasing tools, a backpack blower, he uses backpack blower, um, rakes, shovels. You know, things of that nature.
Personally, I also think maybe having that there so he can get a safety vest each year if it starts fading, or each, every other year.
Does he have his, uh, town chainsaw, or has he got his own?
He has a town chainsaw.
Okay. Okay.
So are, do we feel comfortable that thirty-five is enough for this year to at least prepare for all of that?
Yeah, I think so.
Perfect.
Especially if we're picking up tools that should really.
And underneath fuel.
So fuel, I did get, um, kind of, like I've done with the rust, I kinda went in the middle for. The highest and the lowest, but I kinda went up a little higher.
How much?
It looks like it averages about sixteen hundred a year.
Okay.
If you feel comfortable with that, if you wanna go a little more, depending on what you may feel, we can do that, but that's what I got for an estimate.
Okay. So salary, I kinda looking at it, we should reduce it. He's only used, uh, utilized eleven thousand this year.
This goes by, okay, the salary is what he puts in for hours and such?
Yes. So, I mean, kinda making a recommendation, sixteen hundred bucks.
Did you say sixteen hundred?
Uh, sixteen thousand. Add a zero, add a zero, add a zero.
Me, I just asked you, just cause I can't remember off the top of my head, when did Kevin start as a road agent?
No, it was before time.
Was it before, okay, so this is almost a full year, I just wanted to make sure it was a full year and not.
Where are all Kevin's expenses coming from right now?
Forty-three twelve, forty-three twelve.
Under what line?
Road agent, right?
Well, you have the road contractor, you have the road.
Well, road agent.
I'm in twenty twenty-four, so I wasn't in twenty twenty.
Oh, yeah, I switched that, sorry. So, are we all in agreement for the sixteen thousand or?
Well, I don't wanna, uh, anyways.
If we're gonna raise it, I mean, we gotta cut a little bit here.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Cause I see vehicle maintenance, so we're gonna have to raise that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering. I'm trying to do the math, so we have three months left, we've got winter coming, um. So there may be an influx, but we had winter at the beginning of the season that came from this too, so. I'm just wondering if we can just make it even fifteen as opposed to.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yes.
Can I, can I also ask one thing?
Sure.
I don't think we've gotten his, I don't remember when the last time we got a timesheet for Kevin.
It was July, I think we've seen August.
Fourth.
Oh, September fourth.
We got one, but for what month?
That would've been for August. So, September would've been for August.
Yeah, we did, uh.
That would, that would've included the Elm Street stuff, right, like the brush and everything?
Yeah.
Alright, cause that was, that was a big money thing I was thinking of too, but.
Along the bridge.
Well.
Right.
Hey, I'm sorry, can we pull that, just to verify that? Do we have a folder for just road agent expenses?
Well, we have him, yeah.
Just to verify if the brush is on there?
So what do you think for vehicle maintenance, how much does that should come into?
Thousand bucks.
Well, it is getting older, but I'm wondering with the, what's gonna happen with the old cruiser now that we get the lease? Cause quite frankly, I think that should go to him. And the only reason why is because it'd be better on fuel.
But, but he's got more room in existing vehicle, right?
So I think we need to have. He does, but he's not carrying passengers, he can put the bags.
Yeah, I think the only recommendation I'd have isn't looking at rusts on both, cause the cruiser's pretty bad. But I don't know how bad that suburban is at this point, so. The suburban was undercoated. And that stopped a lot of progression, and it was in pretty good shape, so. The suburban might be in better rust condition, it's also been kept inside almost its whole life. The suburban has, up until recently, right, so, and that would be the only thing. The cruiser might be pretty advanced on rust.
Yeah, I mean, and it, it's just, we were gonna try to get two more years out of it until this lease thing came up, so. And then.
I mean, it'd be no big deal to set him up in, but.
We can put a.
That, that does include all the Elm Street stuff.
It does?
Yeah.
So we can put a thousand dollars in his vehicle, just eat away.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
No, just missed something, so. So you're recommending a fifteen K for the salary?
Yep.
Yeah.
In training, do we do a dollar just in case?
Yep.
Thank you, and then fifteen for salary?
You can't teach an old dog new tricks.
What did you do for fuel?
Fuel was, I, it was sixteen for estimate.
Sixteen hundred?
Yeah.
So the vehicle make, maintenance, you wanna, thousand bucks?
We didn't have a vehicle maintenance line before, correct?
No, no, everything was underneath road.
Looks like he spent. Four, five, so it looks like he spent about seven hundred bucks. Assuming that everything he bought at Napa was for the car. I can't see what it's for, just that it was at Napa.
Yeah.
I know he did the brakes and all that stuff.
There can be bolts and stuff.
He did a caliper.
No, that's Napa, I'm thinking someone else, I'm sorry.
He did a, he did, he had to do a brake caliper and stuff like that, cause it seized up and. Okay.
Thanks, Evan.
So what's that total?
That brings the total to twenty-one thousand, one hundred and two dollars.
Huh?
No, not right.
Try it again.
No, no, that.
No, that's right.
That's right.
Wait a minute, I got sixteen, uh, sixteen thousand for.
No, fifteen.
Fifteen, oh.
We said fifteen, didn't we?
Fifteen thousand for the salary.
I have one dollar cellphone. I have thirty-five hundred equipment. Fuel at sixteen.
I missed that, sorry.
Okay, fifteen, one and one thousand.
So what's the total?
Twenty-one thousand, one hundred and two dollars.
Where'd the two dollars come from?
The two placeholders.
Oh.
Cellphone and.
Another reason why I hate that.
It's something just to keep.
Alright, agree with all that?
Yep.
Alright, next one we should have is forty-three twelve.
Yep.
And I have folders here somewhere hidden under all my papers.
Calcium chloride. So probably spent thirty-five.
We still have another application to do on Pine River Road, that's probably gonna be overspent.
I agree, but for next year.
We can drop that by whatever we put on Pine River Road this year, so. Did you grab it while you were in there?
I grabbed it before, I had it ready for the meeting. So.
So we don't, we don't, we.
It's not in this one.
We will not need as much money for the calcium.
Correct, so I, I, her and I talked about that, that when we get ready for this conversation, to pull the calcium chloride file so I can figure out.
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred?
You've only done two on Pine River, correct? Two applications so far?
Correct, uh, well, technically three.
July thirty-first, I'm gonna go to page July thirty-first, a July eighteenth application, and the next one definitely says Pine River.
So there was one that was only five hundred gallons, that was on a Wednesday and the truck blew up.
Right.
They still billed us for that, but they billed us when they did the second application.
Put it all in one bill.
They put it all in one bill. But we, they've actually been there three times, and we're gonna have to have a four.
Yeah, but.
And it shouldn't be seventeen hundred.
But that should.
It looks like seventeen hundred we spent outside of the, the two Pine Rivers that are showing in here. There's a bill for sixty-eight hundred. There's a bill for ten thousand, two hundred.
I have everything broken down here. Here's for Jack Russell, Hutchins, Stevens and Bailey Road, Pine River Road, right here. For eighty-four.
So somebody write these numbers down, oh, she's gonna do it right here in a moment.
Eighty-four, one, five, that one's the magnesium chloride.
That's one, that's the same.
Alright, this one here. Doesn't tell me what road. Don't tell me on the other slip.
But it's calcium, so it's.
Yeah, but I thought they said what roads they were doing.
Right, but they did calcium on all the other roads, magnesium is Pine River.
Yeah, snow road.
So, okay, but they did some calcium on there though.
Their last application was. Um, calcium.
So that probably would be.
I think that seventeen hundred is gonna be your, the rest of your roads. Seventeen thousand.
I was gonna say.
Seventeen thousand, sorry.
Yeah.
That would be a good sale.
That seventeen is for. Is this one here. Which, that included eighty-four hundred of magnesium chloride, which is Pine River Road, and then the rest was Jack Russell.
This is what I'm looking at, I'm guessing these bottom two are gonna be your Pine River, cause one's July eighteenth, and then that one obviously says Pine River.
July, that July eighteenth's this one. So.
Pine River?
Nope, Jack Russell, Hutchins, Stevens and Bailey Road. So you have two more there, you have one that was July. Eighteen thousand.
Jack Russell got it, Libby didn't get any?
You're really. July eighteen application, Jack Russell.
I took my Mercedes out yesterday and looked, going down, looked, got out to town, I was like, geez, a lot of dust on that damn car.
So we only did one calcium chloride application on Pine River Road, and that should've been right around forty-five hundred bucks. That was the last bill that we, the last invoice we got from them was for a small section of.
Why do you have two?
Pine River. So.
So we don't anticipate to use any calcium in, uh, next year?
Correct.
So that'll be paid. So just be directed.
That must be these two.
Unless we have to do one before the paving can get here.
D C twenty-five twenty? Invoice number?
So you think forty thousand's good?
So what's the other? Probably less if we don't have to do it on Pine River.
Can we cut it down to thirty-five?
That's what I was just thinking of saying, thirty-five.
Well, the magnesium was eighty-four.
Right, magnesium alone, one application was thirty, was, you know, eighty-five hundred bucks, so. Probably drop that to like, ten, but I'm trying. Even the, you know, cost going up. We have a, we still don't know, it's pretty.
All I have for Pine River is that magnesium chloride, but then we have that seventeen thousand dollar invoice that they don't tell us what roads they did. So I can't pinpoint how much was Pine River. Unfortunately.
Cut it to thirty-five. Just to be safe.
We can go lower than thirty-five.
And that would give us a cushion, we can do, if we had to do one application in the spring on Pine River, at least in front of the houses, we could.
Yep, I agree. Crack ceiling was seventeen-five. Do we need to increase it? You think the materials are gonna go up?
The material's gonna go up, but we have to do less road. Because we're not gonna have to address Elm Street or.
Green Mountain.
Green Mountain's gonna be done, so we're looking at.
Yeah.
Um, Snow Road was all, would be the most recent road that was paved, that has been applied, and Bailey Road. And so you're talking just a very short distance of road.
Townhouse was taken care of.
Townhouse Road is beyond crack ceiling.
Yeah, it really is, I was just saying that today.
Um, this is one of the ones like Scott and I were talking about, where crack ceiling should be changed to. Um, crack ceiling and resurfacing like it used to be, back in the day. And, um, when we had Ru- Bruce come in, when we did that little class, that little spiel.
Yes.
And, because I think that we should take, you know, let's say ten thousand, which I think that's gonna be highball, cause if it was only seventeen. To do five miles of road, and we're looking at, we could probably get away with five grand. To do crack ceiling on Snow Road and.
Agreed.
And, um, Bailey Road, but, and then take a hundred grand from unreserved fund balance if we can. And add it to that and, um, do some sort of, uh, shim or, um. Chip seal on Townhouse Road.
I agree.
Cause Townhouse Road's beyond.
Townhouse Road is bad.
Well, it's not bad, I mean.
Then and patch, then and patch those subsurface holes and then.
Right.
And do something.
Bad is going on Pine River initially.
Yeah, well. I just never went up Pine River, no, I did, but I avoided.
Okay, so you wanna reduce crack ceiling down to five, you say?
Well, I would, I mean, if we got five miles of road done. So what's, what's a, what's one-fifth of seventeen-five?
That'd just be a safety factor, but five, four thousand? I mean, that's like twenty-two percent or less, yeah, four thousand, a little less than that, so.
Cause I mean, realistically, where else are we gonna crack seal?
No worries.
I mean, we had to do crack sealing on Green Mountain Road.
And Ry Road.
Right.
And just a little bit on Ryfield Road, because, um, and I mean, what happened on Ryfield Road, and one of the things, if anybody asks you guys this.
Right.
Is Ryfield Road was really relatively new, and they walked down the edge of the pavement with an excavator to mow underneath the power lines.
Wow, that, that was. That was wonderful.
That's what happened to that road, so if somebody asks and says that we need to go with a different contractor. It was environment, it was something that was out of our control, it was brand new pavement. Where we filled in in the wet area, and they walked right down the edge of the pavement with a thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand pound machine.
Okay.
So.
So, I'm sorry, did we say we're making crack ceiling forty-five hundred?
Four K.
Four thousand.
Thousand?
Cause we really only have to do, I mean, how long is Snow Road? At, not even a half mile, right?
Not even a half a mile.
It's probably.
What dirt it was?
Probably a two-tenths of a mile, maybe?
It's not much.
Yeah, my driveway.
Bailey, Bailey Road's probably, I mean, Bailey Road's a little bit longer, that's probably, that's probably half a mile.
Yeah, it's less than a mile.
Combined.
Total combined.
Combined.
So.
Yeah.
That's why I said one-fifth, whatever, figure a mile, and we did five.
Right.
Miles was seventeen-five, so. Four thousand would be.
We're good, okay. Materials, we didn't use much, but I know he's gonna be buying some.
Alright, so. Let me ask this, materials, um.
We had sixty, we used thirty-four so far.
I grabbed the winter, but I didn't grab the summer materials, do you want me to grab those real fast?
Nope. I mean, it's right here, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so right now, we're at thirty-four thousand for.
We just did, um, a couple of thousand dollars right there on the manifest for materials.
Which would be included in the manifest here too.
Okay.
In the total.
Okay.
And nothing, sorry, the B two A, not the manifest.
So, materials is, uh, thirty-four thousand we use, that's sixty.
I mean, we can take from this and add our gravel to Pine River Road next year before we pave, we can.
I agree with this year's budget, but for next year's budget.
Well, right, but we're gonna need sixty thousand dollars worth of gravel on that road, we gotta gravel the whole thing. We don't have to dig it out, we don't have to dig down, but we need to add to it.
So you're gonna utilize some of the material from here, from this year's budget and some from next year's budget?
I'm, I'm just opening the conversation because we.
I agree, I agree, but. So you got.
And we're gonna like materials, so some of the other things that we need to think about is if you drive on Townhouse Road. Are you dropping off the edge of the pavement?
I know where the washout was.
Well, and just below Libby Road as you're coming into them corners, whatever, I noticed the other day as you're approaching Libby Road, if you're going from the library. Towards Libby Road, all in that corner, it's a, it's a six inch step. We gotta do some shouldering. Rather than we have, you know, our contract to do it, but that's gonna be material, there's a lot of roads that need shouldering. Now, some of that shouldering. Can be um, via the grader, so the grader comes in, pulls it up on the road.
Pull it back, yeah.
And that's gonna be, you know, the conversation with our contractor, you know, do you have access to a sweeper, can you, you know, do that manpower? Cuz it's a grader, a loader to pick it all up. Um, because what happens is you wind up with two ditch lines, so you have the, it gets pushed out. So it's higher up over here, so the water can't run off, you've gotta ditch next to the pavement and then you've got a hump.
Right.
So you pull that material back. And I mean, that's what we do in Ospey, but we have a highway department, so we, you know, we have to have that conversation with the contractor, but there are areas. That we're gonna have to bring in materials, so. Um, and we can always add gravel, we al- we always can add gravel to our roads, I mean, a lot of our roads need. You know, substantial amount of gravel, um, and Kevin makes do with what's there, but. Um, I don't really wanna take away from that materials list too much.
Okay.
So we should leave it at sixty?
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, sounds like that, right?
Just in the murder of fresher, Station One parking lot and pile like this way.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Jeff, um. So I'm hoping, you said Station One, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that we can have the conversation, at least get a hot patch for this year. Instead of cold patch or instead of torn up, I mean, it's just not.
Yeah.
In the budget to, unless we take it from the. Um, April Snow Disaster Fund. I think the library and the Station One.
Can we use that same stuff that uh Ron has, that they did on Pine River?
The, the ground asphalt would be a good.
Filling?
Filler, but it's still not hot top, but if we did a hot patch, which is essentially cold patch but using hot top.
Yeah.
And they just come and patch in a hole, they are doing that, um, GMI is doing that at the, that's part of the uh. Um, project at the county, is they got a, they're not resurfacing a whole parking lot, they got a couple areas just like that.
Yeah.
That they're gonna hot patch. You guys went to the administration, I mean. There was a few areas where there were big holes.
Right.
GMI's hot patching those, so.
Do we have an indication how big that rock is?
It's beyond, we can't take it out. So we, I do know, I had a conversation with Ron, Ron hooked onto that several years ago. With his biggest excavator and it wouldn't even budge, so.
Can we hammer it down?
It did get hammered down, it got cut down.
Could we cut it down more?
We don't have to, cuz it's, comes off of one fifty three now, so. Why do you, why?
I'm, I'm trying to remember the last time I drove over it, if it was still kinda rounded up.
No, it got, it got, well, first uh Kevin tried hammering it, sawing it, and then Elliot and Aaron went and cut it more.
Okay, I forgot about that, yep.
So I think it's the surface of it, it's below the dirt surface that's there and the dirt surface is. Obviously dipped down below where it will be when it's hot patched or.
Yeah, it'll cover all that.
So hopefully that.
Yeah, I can always bring my tractor and pull it out, yeah.
Uh, please, by all means, give it a shot. That three twenty or three sixty cat excavator wouldn't even budge it, so he stood that thing right on his blade.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, so.
Wow.
It's ledge, it goes running one fifty three, so.
Yeah, you don't wanna disturbed one fifty three.
I see they're putting.
So you're gonna do the Townhouse too at the same time, those couple of.
See, and the library, just in front of the parking lot, but I don't think that lower area.
Well, it's up, I think there's a spot up.
There's a spot, yeah, there is a.
Up above, yeah, yeah, it's walk up to the parking, yeah.
Yeah.
Chris, if you wanna take a look at Station Two as well, before you set this up, that top left corner, like headed out back, it's really broken up on that corner. That's part of that. I'm just talking about preserving that edge. And then down by the roadway, there's a couple little holes, might make sense to patch those now before they get even worse.
They're not gonna come down and hot patch those, cuz you're talking about a crew coming with. I mean, if they have some left and they need to dispose of, we might be able to convince them to come down there, but. I mean, this is in a very, it's not cost effective because they got a scurry and they gotta have a hand crew, they can't do it with a paving machine.
Gotcha.
Um, so it's, it is kind of expensive, it's cheaper, but it's, it's expensive to do it that way. If that makes sense.
It does, yeah.
Um, what was I gonna show you, so I was, okay, I remember now. So we were talking about that parking lot, parking lot, parking lot.
At uh Station One?
On Station One.
Or the library.
Station, uh, the library.
Library.
Yeah.
What was that guy's name?
Chuck?
Is it a question? So.
They get the.
Yeah, so that's the hole that needs to be identified, you know.
There's one there, and I think there's one up above up here too.
Another one, there's two.
Yeah, there's one just a little further up.
Yeah, there's two of them.
Yeah, so I only have the area that.
Yeah.
Now, that one right there is, the one that was identified is the hole that people have to walk through. There's one right there.
Yeah, it's in that area, okay.
It's right there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the big one that people will have to walk to to get to the wheelchair, cuz this is the end of the building.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay.
So this is, I mean, I wouldn't patch all these holes.
No, I wouldn't, cuz that's all gonna be gone in.
And I mean, realistically, we can still maybe get underneath contractor.
Worst case, put some gravel in there, that's all I do.
You know, under contractor. Is get, I mean, if we can get that hot patch, is still have somebody come in. Mike, maybe, or Elliot, and dig this area out still. Hot patch that and put that back in the green area, the new green area.
Oh, okay.
Right.
As it's been identified, I mean, the library. So I, I like walked this with Chuck and, you know, the library folks and stuff like that, and I mean, they're all in agreements that this would, the, this is the.
Yeah, because he always, when you come out, you wanna come out over here because you can't see down the road, yeah.
So I mean, I, I think we still put this in the green space, he doesn't have to worry about plowing, I think we could, we could still possibly get that done this year. Before it snow flies and even if we don't get that hot patch, we use uh reclaimed asphalt.
Yeah, under something like that, that's what I'm looking at.
And then, you know, we don't even have to worry about plowing that, so.
Right.
Um.
So you wanna leave the sixty thousand?
Yeah, I thought that's what we said.
Materials, okay.
Now we're roadside mowing.
Yeah, I would leave that too, we need a.
Yep. Um, so I mean, we have some left right now, but that's gonna be going away. Um, on Pine River Road where they stopped with the mowing machine, so they're gonna go in and hand cut. Um, Kevin and if you guys are okay with this, Kevin and uh Brad's gonna help some and Rob Evans. Rob Evans has a box truck and he has a chipper with a grapple on it, so between arrowhead drive. Across where the stumps are. All the trees that were underneath the power lines and the communication lines, they couldn't get in with the mowing head machine and where the houses were closed. They're gonna hand cut, they're waiting for cooler weather and the thumbs up from all of us to go do it, so that'll come out of that too.
Okay.
So that will definitely eat up the rest of that budget, so I mean, twenty thousand is definitely. Um.
We got a lot of roads.
I mean, Pine River Road, we, we typically like to do high, uh, you know, tree trimming and things like that on the roads as we get ready. Pine River Road's good, gonna be good to go for next year. Um. But we have a lot of other roads, uh, Plantation Road, I think should be cut back to the wall, I think we should um, go back into the habit of. Schedule like um, Smith Family Tree Service and have them high limbing Townhouse Road. One onto the other.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I agree. Yeah, but guess one side of the road's okay where the tell, where the lines are, it's the other side.
Exactly.
And would this be staying at twenty for the roadside thing?
Agree.
Summer contract.
That's fixed.
Yep.
Almost.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's really not, I mean.
Yeah, but we can do. Depending.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. With your contractor.
Contract, alright, this is me. This is me, hold on, so. This is currently the last year, last season for Edwards until we have to go back out next year. Um, so the first payment's December first, so that's gonna be included in this budget. And then we'll have five other payments after that, which would total two hundred and twenty five thousand. However, we need to keep in mind that.
The new contract.
We're gonna have a new contract with whomever would be awarded the bid for the next three years. So we would need to kind of plan out what we may want to look up, do we wanna level it at two sixty four? And go from there, do we wanna go up just a little bit more? Um, I mean, just for January, February, March, April and May, which are the contracted payments for. That will pay out in twenty twenty six, will be two hundred and twenty five thousand.
And that's including this year too?
No.
No, because forty, forty four thousand of it will be coming out of this one.
So twenty twenty six, five months will be two twenty five?
Two twenty five.
So we got, we spent a hundred seventy five thousand.
Mm-hmm, right.
And we got two sixty four, so you're saying forty four thousand coming out of this for this year? So we have money left over?
Yeah, we're gonna have about forty something left over, right?
Yeah, it's just, well, twenty five, thirty five, forty five, yeah. Yeah, that's.
No, we get two payments.
That's what I'm questioning.
We get two payments.
So is the, cuz.
November.
According to.
December.
And that's what I thought, but the contract says December first. Either, either way, we have five months cuz we only go till May first.
I mean, we budgeted exactly the contract amount.
Yeah.
So that's two payments.
Okay, so.
That's November and December.
Cuz I was pulling through the contract to see what the.
Okay.
Cuz I mean, that'll be, there'll, there'll be no money left in that, so then we have next year is five months.
Five months at next year's rate is two twenty five.
Is that in December through March or November through?
Not April through, I mean, January through December.
Okay.
Should be January through December of next year, we should plan on, even though the contract ends April first.
Correct, we planned for January, February, March, April, May and December. Or November, December, however you want.
So we should.
Yeah, we, cuz in the past we got the double payment, I mean, we had that.
Yeah, that's when we, we did the overlapping, we were actually over, overspent on the budget. Because we had the new contract and the old contract's final payment.
Right.
And that made us over.
Right.
Spend. We don't wanna do that again, it's where you at least minimum wanna level fund it.
So I'm looking right here real fast, please give me one second. I must, I passed it. So on the contract, it reads for compensation. Town agrees to pay the contractor contract amount of two hundred fifty seven thousand for twenty three to twenty four. Two hundred and sixty three for twenty four to twenty five, and then this one's two sixty eight for the twenty four, twenty five to twenty six. The town agrees to, or the contractor agrees to receive the payment of the contract price from the town in six equal payments. Starting December first, uh, the first each month until the following May first. Unless we bumped up and it went November, December, January, February, March and April. I could be reading this in a totally wrong way and I think that's how it goes. I don't know, I, I didn't overthink.
Well, I mean, if that says two sixty four for the twenty five, twenty six season and it goes December to May.
It says. Six equal payments starting December first until the following May first.
So there's always one payment that comes out of the previous fis- fiscal year for twenty twenty six. That's what was screwing us up in the past. So the new twenty twenty six payment is two, two what?
It's two sixty eight, so that would start.
So that automatically, yeah, two sixty eight should be your minimum on your budget here. Not two sixty four. That's twenty twenty five.
Well, no, I know, I'm going based off because you have twenty five to twenty six, so that two hundred and sixty eight thousand starts December first of this year.
Right, so we got.
So if we wanted to make it two sixty eight to cover us for whatever may come next year, we can, that's why.
We have to do that, yes, we have to do that. Um.
A minimal.
Yes, I would go two seventy, just to cover our ass.
Yeah.
So what is the, I mean, we can. Did they give a percentage of an increaser? So take the first year, can you give us the year to year? So twenty three, twenty four was how much?
They go up roughly uh, five to six thousand.
Yeah.
So it went from two fifty seven to two sixty three, from two sixty three to two sixty eight.
So five thousand dollars.
Five thousand to six thousand.
Take the two, so in the, the twenty five, twenty six is how much? Two sixty four?
Two sixty eight is twenty five to twenty six.
So add five thousand to it.
So do two seventy four? No, two seventy?
At least two seventy.
Alright, so right now, in your winter contract right now, you got a hun- utilized a hundred seventy five thousand, we have the first payment, Dec- December first. And that was like forty four thousand something.
It's forty four and change, yeah.
Yeah, forty four, five, five, eight. You have a total budget of two sixty four, so we have enough money in there for two budgets, so we're gonna lose forty four thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars. Once January first, this'll roll over, right? This does not roll into twenty twenty six.
Goes back into the general fund.
Right, so we're screwed. How do we?
We have a new budget, so.
Yeah.
We'd be going off of January's budget anyway. Which is a whole new year.
I know, but how do we get forty four thousand something that's left over in this budget?
Well. To your discussion earlier, it's a contracted amount, we can roll that over.
Correct.
If it's contract, you can roll it over.
You can encumber the funds because of the contract.
Looking at, so we have the extra money. We should throw it into twenty twenty six, since we didn't use it.
If you do that, this is the only thing, when you encumber that, it goes to the six thousands, it will not show up or reflect on this one.
Right.
So you still can do that, you most certainly can, but one payment would have to come out of six thousands and the rest would come out of that, so it wouldn't be included on. Like, will be included on this budget, we can keep that up.
Payments we have in twenty twenty six, four?
January, February, March.
Technically six, January, February, March, April, May, December. Cuz you'll have to pay December in that year.
But underneath the contract obligation at forty four, so just do five, do five at. The current rate. Forty four.
So.
Two hundred thousand, you said two twenty five, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then we use the encumber to make up that December payment for the, if we have a new contract.
So we can cut this down to.
I wouldn't cut it, I'd level, I'd leave it at the two sixty.
So.
This year is total.
Shoot.
But how do we take the forty four? Thousand out of this, this year budget, I mean, we're gonna have one payment in December.
You have to vote to encumber the funds.
That's a vote to encumber the funds and that roll over until the next year.
A selectman?
Correct, that usually comes in the November timeframe.
Yeah.
Um, so if you broke down the two sixty eight, I divided it by six because it goes by that.
Right.
That time, it breaks it down to about forty five thousand. Um, it's four, forty four thousand six hundred and sixty six thousand.
Forty five, okay, that's good.
For five months, it would be two hundred and twenty three thousand three hundred and thirty.
So take the two twenty three and add another forty five to it. And that's basically the two seventy, so that's still how much money we have to raise.
But then again, we'll have an extra forty five K to play with. Cuz you're gonna take.
Right, but we don't know how much our contract's gonna be.
Yeah, it's gonna go up.
They could go, they could go up, whoever, whoever it may be can go up tremendously.
But that's one payment though.
The forty four.
That would be one payment next year, correct?
Right, it's only one payment.
No, no, no. One payment in the fall for the beginning of a new contract.
Right.
This contract expires May of next year. And we're gonna, we have to, we have to put on an RFP for a new three year contract next summer. And that contract will start in the fall of twenty six. That money, that first payment will be our encumbrance and maybe some, somewhere else.
Got it.
That's why I said we need to level fund that and still have that forty five cushion. Because if they come in with an addition, you know, they say three hundred thousand dollars for the first year.
We're screwed.
We're gonna need that forty five, that forty five we added to the two sixty and that will give us our three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, gotcha, I know where you're going with it. Alright, so what do you wanna do, how much?
Level fund at two sixty eight.
Two sixty eight.
For winter roads.
And then put on the agenda that we need to. And then put on the agenda that we need to. Put this uh into a five thousand number, the extra funds.
That comes in November, so November you do the encumbrances. So I I don't do encumbrance until close to the end of the year, so we have all the amounts.
Right, so make a note of that?
Caitlin, just out of curiosity, cause I think we already asked this question, so I I didn't hear the answer. Why is it say on the sheet that the twenty five's budget is for two sixty four?
She just copied it.
Which one? Hold on.
The winter road's contract to sixty four, six seventy, it says.
Which is the same as what it was.
Same as the budget to actual.
So you didn't take into the new price for the third year.
So shouldn't that say, shouldn't that be twenty five to twenty six, number the two sixty eight?
Yeah, two sixty eight, two seventy.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm.
What is the contract price for twenty six twenty five twenty six?
Twenty five twenty six is two sixty eight.
That's what this line right here should say then for twenty five's budget. No?
Dash oh six.
No, no, because it starts twenty four.
Okay, so what was twenty four twenty five's budget?
Twenty four to twenty five was two sixty three.
Okay, why does it say two sixty four and change?
I can't tell you right off the top of my head.
Okay, that's, do you understand my confusion?
I I understand stand your confusion and I can't answer that because that was last year's thinking.
So what's what's this year's, what's what what number we're gonna put in there now?
The two sixty eight.
Two sixty eight, right?
Which is two sixty eight, two seventy, so. That's what it came out to for the this year's contract for twenty 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 six.
Twenty five to twenty six, so December twenty five.
The twenty six is two sixty eight.
Sixty eight.
And two hundred and seventy dollars.
I don't know where you got two hundred and seventy, but it's just two sixty eight.
What's the contract say?
Two sixty eight.
That's it, okay, I thought.
Just even, just even two sixty?
Just even two sixty eight.
I'm good, alright, I thought I heard two seventy in there.
Okay, winter materials?
There's a warning here.
What are you doing?
He's about forty seven.
Your husband here?
No.
Didn't have him in the car?
No.
Are you trying to rush her?
No, no, I just asked, I just saw like, let's see what's up. Must be getting lonely out there.
No, he would've been in here, cause this wasn't a closed meeting.
Right, uh materials?
Winter materials.
So I think that should stay the same, so we we're easily gonna use. So that's one of the questions I had just real quick, not to get off topic, but they wanna know when they can hot start hauling sand. You guys good if they start hauling sand? They're not gonna need any for a while, so Aaron did tell us today that they did, they have the machinery there, they piled up the sand.
Okay.
End of the, they end of a cone, end of a, what the heck she call it?
Pyramid.
I don't remember what she called, but I said she's, it's pushed kind of aside so you go around and do what you need to do.
Right, but the whole thing, I asked him to cone it up.
Right.
And coning it up, it creates that shell, so you don't have as much loss when it freezes. So when you go into it, you wind up with the chunks and stuff like that. So because I want to, I want, and we still have to have a meeting with them. And go over our expectations for the winter roads, look at equipment and stuff like that, I want them to use less salt on the dirt roads.
More sand than salt.
Um and one of the reasons why they use the salt and mix it in with the sand is to keep it from pumping, or if you cone it up. And then you get that shell on the outside, you don't get chunks of sand and you can go straight sand. And that's, you know, what we come talked about, so they did tone up. Route twenty five salt shed today, and they said that they not gonna need any there, but they do need some at the transfer station. They moved all the equipment down there, they're gonna stop pushing that up, they are gonna need significant amount of sand there. White mill is still the way to go, I did ask them to every once in a while, throw in a three eighths P stone, mix and blend it. So you get those ice storms, whatever, where it covers it right back over again, you get the P stone in there.
Right.
And that holds for a longer time, so. So I think the seventy, we should leave it at seventy four.
Okay, good, and you're gonna tell them to start bringing sand in?
Yeah, if you guys are okay.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
And get a, well, we don't wanna get salt yet, but.
Let me know if you guys are ready for a total, cause I have one.
You have one.
For what?
Look at you.
Everything.
Grand thing, I'm entering in here, it's a lot easier.
Throw it at me.
Go ahead.
Five hundred and sixty one thousand even.
Wow, okay.
I love that.
Um I don't know if I put bridges in there, I don't think I did, but I leveled that one out, we've always stayed at a thousand realistically, so.
Yeah, cause we have a expendable trust one. And I think we determined what agents to expend or we're not.
I have that information right here, hold on.
Because if not, then we need to do a warrant article because we have to do some.
Bridge work.
Bridge work on Hunter's Bridge.
Town Home Bridges Ciara, uh two thousand two, two thousand eight, Article twelve, B O S named, agents to expend.
Okay, how much is it?
Um I, this is from the end of last year, so end of last year, it was eleven thousand, no. Fifty fifty nine thousand, if I'm reading this right, in the corner right now.
Second page?
I'm I'm reading something different, I have.
She has it.
I have a thing.
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, sixty thousand.
That's almost enough to redo the boards on Snow Road.
Don't even come there. That damn bridge.
Okay, word.
So at, it'll have sixty two thousand and once everything's switched over to the snow.
Okay, good.
There's that one on there too.
We're good with that.
See, what's the next one you have?
Forty three twenty one.
Satiation administrations.
It's supposed to be sanitation.
Administration, it's gotten fancy.
Nah, it's uh sanitation.
It's satiation, that's misspelled, it's Satan is. Satan's gonna have, Satan's gonna have his own.
This is another one that obviously, as you can tell, everything is getting switched to be D R I standards. So it's another one where some things are gonna be misplaced and different than where you see it on here.
Yeah, I don't see it forty three twenty one.
Nope, because this is a totally new one, so forty three, what have we got? Um salaries, so you would be comparing to forty three twenty three.
So why we got mileage, hundred bucks?
I don't know, it's historically been there at a hundred, we can make that one, I haven't seen.
I mean, we're.
What's this for?
So if you're looking at the budget to actual forty three twenty.
So mileage was for them to go take their training and classes, they do that here now.
Yeah, they do it here now.
They used to have to go some.
Placeholder a dollar.
A dollar, right?
So make that one.
What's the salary?
Salaries.
Salaries, they're.
So are we gonna, is there a raise in there?
I I haven't put anything in, everything's blank on this one.
So we have twenty one thousand, two thirty one left, are we gonna exceed that rest of the year or not? That's what, three months to go?
We might be close, I wouldn't say we exceed, I'd say we'd probably be under a little bit.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you're looking at.
Increasing it by two point five?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Are you taking the whole eighty and doing it that way?
No.
Cause I don't know each individual.
I would, well, I'll just take the whole sum, fifty eight, what's the percentage of that of eighty thousand in the next three months?
Seventy three percent. So you got twenty two percent.
So it's two four, it's averaging another twenty, and you'd be, you're gonna have about ten thousand left. In that budget. Cause right here, right now, let's say. Probably get about seventy four thousand next week.
I think we can safely say that even with the.
Eighty thousand be okay? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
No, if I'm correct, it's down to three people there.
Oh, yeah. We're not doing the previous administration type process.
Okay, make that level at eighty thousand. Alright, this right here. Um the next one is the road cleanup, so that is Brad on his. Out of transfer station type hours, so picking up tires.
So your average is probably what, four hours a month?
Uh so we were gonna, not to go backwards, but we were gonna talk about underneath the roads, having a salary line.
Was it out there? I thought it was.
For that sort of thing, so. Or we can just leave it underneath this one.
I thought it was under roads too, I processed.
We should put it underneath highways and streets, no, that's Kevin Downs.
Well, that's still the same.
Well, that's.
That's they both.
Would be under the highway administration, cause that's where the salaries would come out of.
I don't have a highway administration.
Yeah, you do, forty three eleven dash oh one.
Oh, highway administration, okay, I get it on the top, alright.
Glad because you got salary road anything, I would add it in here.
So the road cleanup, move that?
Move that over.
No, I leave.
And then we put another one.
The road cleanup, I mean, basically tires and all that, that's.
Just leave, we'll just leave it there, we'll just leave it alone, that's fine. It works, and then when we, when we steal Brad to do work with Kevin, we can just take it out of that that contract align. The way it's been, so.
All the way it's been.
Yeah.
Okay.
That work, I think.
Yes, but um so going backwards, uh salary road cleanup, it's what, two, three times a week, a month, twice?
Yeah, I mean.
Tires or whatever.
I I would probably put that one at twenty five two.
Twenty five thousand?
No, no hundred.
Twenty five hundred? Twenty five hundred?
I I don't know, is that? I I don't know, I don't have it broken down to how, what's.
I mean, if he goes out two or three times a year, I mean.
What's his uh pay? It's usually two hours.
That one, if it's out of, out of transportation is twenty five.
So that's okay, fifty dollars.
So maybe a thousand?
So that's a hundred and fifty.
What was that?
Five hundred?
What, I was a hundred hundred and fifty, let's say if he does it three times a month, it's a hundred and fifty bucks, but I know in the winter time he doesn't.
Right.
I mean, three times a month, holy, that's, you know.
Yeah.
But do we also, does he also pick up the bags for um the conservation commission on our day?
No, they do, they do that, or I do that.
I put seven seven fifty, worst case.
I think seven fifty would be doable.
But we don't have uh, you don't have access to the hours that he's done so far this year, as far as just roadside cleanup, you don't have that.
I I have it broken down by name and it just says Brad and it does bring down.
But it's a different pay scale, even with it being a different pay scale, it's not easier to.
No, because it just says his name and what he's made under that item.
Or do you adjust it to?
You don't think five hundred bucks would be enough?
We could try five hundred, and if he goes over.
What I can do is we can put five hundred as placeholder, I can look at the time sheets and go that way.
Okay.
That would probably be the easiest.
Yep.
Okay, um supplies, um supplies there at nine hundred. They did have the cones and the signs this year.
Yeah.
So that's, that's two things.
Yeah, two, two, three hundred bucks, four hundred bucks. I drop it to a thousand.
Where did, where do their dues come from for the N double R A C P?
A B C.
North Country Recycling Recovery, whatever, the hundred and thirty four bucks.
There, it might come out of supplies, I'd have to check.
There should be a dues line then, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not underneath, I mean, is this all part of? Cause now it's forty three twenty one, it was forty three twenty four and five. No, it's landing for a long return.
Yeah, that's different.
Where's the dues?
I don't, I think we could change training to dues, cause their training's free.
Yeah, that's right too.
Oh, okay.
How much?
Um and then do we still, I'd have to look, do we still have their certifications somewhere, because that costs money.
Well, that would be training.
Trainings and.
So then the certifications.
Dues and certifications, whatever.
Certifications and dues.
Dues and certifications.
I would, I would leave them separate, I tried to standardize the verbiage between budgets. Seminars, I've moved them all to be training, so that they all made sense.
Okay, I'm gonna.
So if.
I'm gonna make them certifications though, because you're, we're really paying for the certifications, not the training. Training's free, we have to pay for them to be relicensed and certified. So I added a new line for certifications. There's two people who go through it every year, average is fifty bucks, I'd say a hundred and fifty in case we reach a three person a year. I don't know who is next year, if there's three people, if there's two.
No, there's, well, I just had that conversation.
Brad and Lenny are this year, Char- Charlie was this year. What?
What? Nothing, we're, I don't, I'm trying to be careful, cause we're on camera, so. This is a personnel thing, but there was a discussion that possibly somebody went through the training and didn't have to.
Oh, twice.
This year, they weren't up.
Well, we'll talk about that, cause I, the only time is when people come, or you know, staff come to me saying, hey, I need to do it. Uh set that up.
Okay.
Alright, so you wanna do a.
So how hard is it to find out if supplies is the N double R C P Q R S T V? Cause we pay for that somehow, somewhere.
We do, and I it may come out of supplies, I can go check in a second.
I would just add a dues line. We need a dues line.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I agree with you, I already put, so I did put dues, I changed training from dues, so I made that oh oh five.
Yeah, just pull the dues out of the supplies.
Oh oh six is a new line item, which will be the certifications. And I would say either a hundred or a hun- a hundred and fifty for those. I don't know which, which the board would like to choose.
So we're going supplies, we don't know yet.
We don't know, oh five is.
Training, oh five gets crossed out and that becomes dues. And then we're adding an oh oh six, and that is.
Certifications.
Right.
Okay, so there's some numbers you gotta look into.
And what, and we don't know how much the certs are?
They're fifty dollars a piece, so I was saying either a hundred or a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so do three.
Yes.
So as a placeholder for right now, I'm gonna put a hundred.
So the supplies are questioned too, until we find out if there's dues.
If there's dues in that.
Yeah, so we know that we paid that somewhere, and I don't see another line underneath forty three twenty three.
That's why I'm I'm pretty, I'm feeling it is supplies, but.
Unless we paid for it underneath one of our other dues lines.
I I don't think I saw, I'll I'll look though, I'll check.
Well, I mean, you know, we had that long lengthy conversation.
Um here, do you guys wanna talk about supplies and I'll go take a peek?
Good.
So supplies I do wanna put in too, um. Because the staff at the transfer station do get boot reimbursement, comes out of the supply line item, I don't know.
Oh, so for uh boots, coats, whatever.
Correct.
But they're all pretty well equipped right now with the coats, right?
Yeah, they're coats, I got them last year.
Yeah.
So, um.
But they don't get boots every year.
Boots, I don't know who may need new ones, um I know there were two that were reimbursed.
This year.
This year or last year, yes, this year.
So we're not talking about a person, we're talking about a policy.
Right.
So as far as like the boot policy goes, I do agree, if you're only open essentially two and a half days a week. And we have some people that don't work, that they only work one day. I mean, it's not, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to say that your boot should last you two years.
Oh, no, I agree with you.
Not at all.
My boots lasted two years, I work every day.
That's not unreasonable.
I just got these this weekend.
Dirty them already.
Well, cause I actually work, that's the point I was getting at.
Still tall?
Yeah. Oil proof, electric proof, shock proof.
A hundred and thirty five and it came out of supplies.
So that's a dues?
I said a hundred and thirty four.
Correct.
So we wanna leave it a hundred and fifty in case it goes up?
It probably wouldn't hurt.
And that's a far cry from the twelve thousand dollars we used to pay.
Really?
Alright, so the supplies can be dropped a little bit, but I mean, not really, if we're gonna talk about boots and all that stuff. Boots are what, two hundred bucks? Uh approximately. And the other supplies are toilet paper and all that stuff?
No, because that goes under building.
So what's this, what's including the supplies, that's just more uh signs?
Honestly, the signs and the cones, if you're not. Next year, I would say drop it.
Five hundred bucks.
Because those cones and the signs themselves, that took up a good portion too, so.
Right, five hundred, I'm good.
If we had two people that get reimbursed the boots. We only have three.
Yeah, because Charlie and uh, Lennon got new coats.
Yep, clothes are last year, so they should, that should be all set.
Right.
Um.
So what's your total?
My total is, once I get to the down.
I just wanna run the numbers again, so dollar per placeholder.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. Alright, yep, go ahead Leo.
Eighty thousand, uh, road cleanup, five hundred, supplies, five hundred, and remaining two, a hundred and fifty each.
Correct, and that brings your total to eighty-one thousand, three hundred, and Chris's favorite, one dollar. So eighty-one, three oh one.
That's right, cause you have placeholder.
So just gotta verify the salary if we do with the two bef- two point five percent. That we're still within the eighty thousand.
That we're not going to.
No, no, I'm just wanting to verify.
Alright, also next is forty-three twenty-three.
That was it.
Hey, yours?
Maybe I didn't press those ones, maybe I said it would be another time?
Maybe.
Or maybe I, no, I think I know what it was, I needed to see, cause the containers, we have an eighty-five thousand right now, and I wanted to see. With the new rates, cause I got those, so I'm.
From Waste Management?
Yep, I'll get that, um, okay, nope, I know exactly, these are all other ones that are contracted.
How come we haven't used any money in electronics?
Haven't got bill for it yet.
This year?
I haven't seen anything yet, no, unless it's placing the wrong thing. They picked up, no, they picked up twice, didn't they?
Yeah, they picked up twice, yeah.
I'm gonna check.
Can you check with Michelle and see what happened?
No, I'm good, I'm just kidding.
Um.
Yeah, Michelle, please check into that.
Well, I haven't, she, she was on a little while ago, I don't know if she's still on now.
Hi.
I don't, I haven't seen an electronics invoice, myself. And if they mailed it, I would have been the first one to see it going through the mail.
I know we had two pickups, I'm almost sure we had two pickups already.
Wow.
Well, we just had one recent.
Right, I know there was one this spring.
One earlier in the spring.
Right.
I'll look, I'll, I'll give them a call, see what's going on. Um, but then other than that, I need to look at the containers and make sure the transfer and stuff, we got all set.
So I see the freon too is quite high, went over budget. So all the money we get for the fridge and the air conditioners and all that, it all goes into the trust fund, right, to the.
Into that special.
Special fund.
I would.
That a hundred.
I thought that's what it was.
I will check, I. I don't wanna speak out of trouble.
I'm almost sure that's where it goes.
Yeah, that's where I know it was supposed to go, into that fund.
So.
But other than that, the.
Shouldn't that money, instead of going to that type of trust fund, shouldn't that money go into, I mean, since we have to pay to get rid of the freon and. Get all that stuff, why is it going into that type of fund where we can't have access to it? Where it should go into this type of file fund where Swackman has access to it to pay for this.
To pay for those bills, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I've said the.
First, I should check to make sure which one it's coming out of.
Well, I know Bill said, remember he talked about he transferred it into a.
Yeah, C D, and then we still have the special revenue fund, so we have both. And then any money that comes from the transfer station on weekends or Wednesdays, that goes into that fund. Records, I have to check, cause I don't know what's.
I'm not talking records, I'm talking about the freon, the air conditioning.
The stuff we charge people for.
Or tires.
Yeah, so that stuff goes into that special revenue fund.
Which we have no access to.
Correct.
For large expenditures, isn't it?
So the idea is for future expansion and building.
Right.
Yeah, well, we gotta work a hundred plus, I mean, how long do we wanna keep going on this and? But yeah, the taxpayers are paying for this, and we have to raise a budget, our taxes, because we have to charge. We're not, we should take the money out, what, what they're paying for to get rid of the appliances, and not raise the taxes. Follow me?
The only thing is we have to figure out how we can do that, cause you can't transfer from that special fund to a trust fund.
The only way to do it is to end that and have the money go into the general fund and then.
Or a special ETF account, where Swackman can pull the money out.
You can't do that.
No, that's true.
But we could put it in the general fund, and then come budget season, some of that expense, we could. Take out the down reserve fund balance.
Offset it. I just think that. Taxpayers are paying for the money to get rid of goods, and we have, still charging them twice, because now we're gonna raise the taxes, because we gotta raise money in to pay for the freon.
Well, hey, that's been my mindset right along, that's why it was like we used to charge for metal, and I mean. We may need, need to have another public hearing to discuss our charges, because we charge twenty dollars for a refrigerator, and. We're only paying five dollars to recover the freon, and then we're getting paid for that refrigerator and scrap after the freon's gone.
True.
One way to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. Is.
Double, almost doubled that this year so far, on the freon.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Ninety-eighty-two, and we only budgeted five fifty. See it?
See the amount of refrigerators we've taken in?
Mm-hmm, quite a few. So we gotta verify the freon, just to make sure we're paying. Does it specify how many units? That's a clean air conditions and all that.
Correct, it'll say fridge and.
So we're almost doubling for what we anticipated. See what I mean?
Right, but one of the things you gotta take into consideration is.
Propane.
No, it's freon.
It's freon.
No, I know, but we don't have a spot for propane.
We don't have a spot for propane. But that vendor takes propane.
So that's taking both freon and propane.
Right.
That could be it, because.
No, just verify that then, we gotta verify.
But I mean, for all of the, even with that increase, that just means that we made that much more, because we're charging triple. To dispose of the item, as we are to get rid of the freon, and then once the freon's gone, then it goes as revenue.
Right, well, that's why I wanna know how many units.
Right.
The guy's done this year, then we can do the number, twenty bucks, whatever it is. Cost, and then say, okay, yeah, oh.
I mean, you take, like.
Then, you know, if it's, let's say it's five thousand bucks, so okay, yeah, we can drop this.
I mean, you have to rip the refrigerator door off too, before it goes down there.
Yeah, and usually they bring it in without the door, don't they? I think most of the time, we're back to their doors off.
Yeah, the doors have to be off, whatever, well, like I took a refrigerator down there, uh, or chest freezer. And like, uh, the, you know, that has to be off, and I paid twenty bucks when I ripped it off, and I said, it goes in the, and I said, no, it goes in the metal bin, that's metal.
Oh, they said we're gonna put in a.
Yeah, and I walked over and I threw it in the metal bin. They're like, ah, you know, what always goes in there, and I said, well, I said, where does the refrigerator go when they get rid of the freon now?
That person should.
I also want to give you guys a heads up that there's a requested non-public as well.
Today?
Yes.
Well, before we get to that, I, I did bring up some things, um, we need to talk about, so obviously. Uh, you guys are okay with the brush, cutting, you're okay with the sand, go ahead, tell them to go ahead with the sand. I have a couple people giving us prices on stumps. The stump grinding, we obviously have a price of twenty-four, twenty-five hundred bucks from Elliot for stump grinding. Um, Smith Family Trees Service is giving us a price as well. Four.
Four.
Yep. Um, so we got a price on that, we have one price so far for the, um, salt shed. And Caitlin, you did say, did you get the email from the new price, was that the sixty-eight or the ten? Okay, so, um, I did talk to Erin today, and I let her know that we all felt like that was still a little high, and we were. You know, soliciting prices from, uh, other sources, whatever, still waiting for those to come in, I don't know if you. Give any thought to anybody, you know, I talked and said you don't.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I don't know anybody, I mean, that does that stuff.
I mean, I even contemplated trying to find the time myself to get in there and do it.
I mean, I would help you too.
I just don't have the.
Yeah.
I don't.
I mean, it's still brush and paint the shit on. That's about it.
Um, I just don't have the time, so hopefully we get, you know, I said, I got two, two prices out there, and, um. And then again, when we, I met with Ron and Kevin. Uh, to look at the stumps, look at the culvert, and look at the ditch work of Pine Ridge Road weeks ago. Um, and they've been working, they picked away, the stumps are all done, they're moving to the ditching aspect of it. So we received, um, some complaints, concerns about, um, a homeowner between. Arrowhead Drive and College Park, or I think it's called College Park. Um, now that the wheel ruts aren't there, the pavement, the pavement's gone, the water used to run down the pavement. It used to not be able to get off the road, now that the, it has a shape to the road, it's crowned to the road, it's running in, and washing in this guy's driveway, washing the sand in his driveway. So one of the resolutions, I said just, you know, just off the pavement, essentially still within the right way. To put a load of gravel and create like a, instead of dropping right off the edge of the road, sloping down into his driveway, create a plateau. So you have a bit of a valley between the entrance to his driveway and the ditch line of the pavement, so the water will run by. So there was a discussion about putting in a culvert, well, it would take at least forty feet of a twelve inch culvert to go across. Here's my concern and the issue, obviously the town does not make a habit, they actually have a policy, that they don't replace driveway culverts. The landowner can supply the culvert, will put it in if they're working, this is an Ospe residence, it's not even an ethane residence.
Even going worse.
So. We do the gravel, or we buy a culvert?
Or not buying a culvert, not for a driveway. I mean, should we even put, be putting gravel in there?
Well, the gravel, we can justify, cause it's still within our right of way, our shoulder.
Okay, do you understand that you should probably put a culvert in there?
I honestly don't think a culvert's gonna, I did to begin with, I mean, when we went, I mean, that was a, that was a response, I mean. Everybody has their own opinion, but it's, it, the guy would have to relocate his mailbox, I really don't think forty feet's gonna get it done, and then it's just transferring. The water from going into his driveway, which carries sand onto his lawn, to directly into his lawn. And it's still a dirt shoulder, so it's still gonna carry dirt on his lawn, and potentially, if we did put the culvert in, or if he did. It's gonna divert the water even faster to Arrowhead Drive and may create a problem there, I certainly don't want any part of that.
Okay, just do the gravel.
Gravel. Do the, I, I can't see a culvert there.
Well, have a load of gravel or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, I think that's all. I've got right now. Oh, and the signs, I talked to the sign guy, so.
Oh, did you?
Uh, I should be able to go pick up the signs, if I can find the time, should be able to pick the signs up Friday.
Where at?
Uh, bow. He can ship them, but.
Costs.
I, it costs to ship them, so. We didn't, I didn't see signs in streets.
No, I didn't see that either.
I will look into that.
It's like, wait a minute, hey, hold on a second, I didn't see signs.
What number was that?
Uh, it should've been forty-one, uh, yeah, forty-one.
No, forty-three.
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 Yeah, signs and equipment.
Alright, so I'll take a peek on that and I'll.
I had it.
Yeah, calcium, crack sealing materials, roadside, summer contract, winter contract, the winter materials. That was entirely Caitlin's fault. So is that gonna bump the numbers probably to make it make sense, or?
Yep.
Yeah, they're alphabeticals, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you only used two forty-five, but you didn't get a bill for the signs yet, right?
Yeah, so that's gonna eat this budget, so. Alright.
So there's also a non-public, let's see, and if you could please just state the time when we go into it, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Alright, see, make a motion to go into non-public RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, commer. Numero two, little c.
It's actually number two. What? Nineteen oh two, time.
Seven oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
Steven's aye.
We're seeing aye.